With anything on the agenda tonight. Okay, here now, let's move to approval of the minutes. Does anybody have any changes? Grammar?
Well. You know, the minutes, sorry, sorry Matt, but the minutes were a little rough.
They were, they are.
They, they were a little rough, so I, I don't, I, I mean, I didn't see anything substantively off, but there were.
So because of the discussion, they were more.
They were, they were flushed out a bit.
And so there were more of the back and forth conversations and the discussions of how you got to what you got to. In the end of the day, and so when I, when I sit there and do the minutes, I always debate, okay, well, what to keep? What, and my man, it's still, it's substantive because it adds to the discussion and the overall outcome.
Well, and as I said, I didn't see anything wrong in the minutes, but.
Okay, but yes, they were wording.
Their wording and names that changed and stuff like that.
Yeah.
I, I suggest we just, because they were so dense, just approve them as they are unless somebody had a substantive problem with it.
Well, one of my quotes kept saying inappropriate, but it really was in two words, you know, inappropriate locations. I think it was the context.
It's page eighteen of the minutes.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, at the bottom, yeah, I noted it.
I don't know if that's going to. Be a big, you know, end up. You know, the control district is to provide inappropriate locations. You know, you would have hoped that it would be understood that it was too meant to be two words. Cause it says it again somewhere, I think.
I just caught it the one time.
The one time?
Yeah.
Yeah, I should probably trust you.
Well, let me do a search on it. Okay, inappropriate is in here three times. Okay, so it is, it's above, just above that again, on page eighteen. So I caught the second one, but there's one in the paragraph above it.
Okay, where are you looking at?
So page eighteen of the minutes, page twenty of the packet.
Okay, I see it, so it's paragraph three, oh, a little past midway.
Yeah. While he's looking that up, can we propose to amend the minutes and approve as amended? Or is this something you have to kick all the way till next time?
No.
No, you can. You can approve as amended, okay. Yep.
Okay, that one there.
Nope, two votes, it was down. That one, yep.
Inappropriate locations. So you want to change that to?
Two words. In.
In space.
Space appropriately.
Okay.
Or amen?
And I did that three times.
No, two times, and then the next paragraph after that.
Okay.
Well, then it would change the.
Okay.
Yeah.
While we're at it, let's just make it Mexican hat and not Mexican cat.
Where?
I like that one.
Mexican cat.
And is there a?
Can you copy both of those?
I'll catch it.
Mexican cat is on page.
I can catch it later.
Nine.
Okay, any others?
Is there someone named Smith that was advising the attorneys on the staff recommendation for the website? Because there's a mention of someone named Smith. Oh, yeah, here it is, page twelve. And this staff report that Smith prepared was to give, designed to give you the language. But you don't have to stick to that language, it's the fourth paragraph.
That's page twelve of the minutes?
Yeah, page twelve.
Okay, I didn't know if it was just a, supposed to say somebody else's name and it came out Smith.
Public staff, eh? You prepared it.
Whatever the other attorneys. But then on their side of it, who was the other attorneys?
Just in context, it says, and, and this staff report that Smith prepared was designed to give you the language, but you don't have to stick to that language. That's Smith. No, it was Bart.
Let me look into that one.
Right, to go either way, yeah.
I'll go back and listen to that.
Yeah.
Even AI would have caught. Kind of separate from Smith. Yeah, let me look it up and see. We're sad and fake people in there.
You made the correction on the cat?
Yeah, yeah. That's funny. Anything else on that one?
Okay, no motion to approve the minutes from August fourteenth as amended?
On second.
Motion in the second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, now on to the approval of the planning commission meeting minutes for September eleventh.
We put the, we put the agenda back up.
That one right there?
Yep, there we go.
So we're on this item here.
So the approval of the planning commission meeting minutes from September eleventh. Which is page thirty-one, correct?
Yes.
That was a pretty good training.
That was a real good training. I put on there just your questions and comments to capture those, but it not necessarily is training and so.
Anybody have anything? We get a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve September eleventh. Is that right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Minutes for September eleven meeting.
On second.
The motion in the second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries. So next we have public comment, this is time reserved for the public comment on items or issues not listed on the agenda. So there will be time set aside for items on the agenda, is that correct, Matt?
I thought we had different language about that now.
Yeah, I think, I think this is changed.
It's in the, in your minutes, I think. If you wanted to go over that, last time we didn't. Maybe it's not.
Is there a public hearing, right? Probably better to have the comments on things than that.
That, yeah, because that's normally what we've been doing, is anything on or off the agenda is now is your time served for that. And the way that this is reading is anything that's not on the agenda, like it used to.
It should be on or off.
Yes.
Off the agenda, anything, yeah.
So can. Yeah, that's different, a public hearing is completely different. But without a public hearing, it's, we've been, I mean, the norm lately has been anything on or off the agenda, this is the time to set aside for that.
Yeah.
So do we need to amend this agenda?
Yeah, I'll fix that in the future.
Do we need to amend it today or just move on?
It's, you can literally do what you want in the meeting on there, it's not a specific requirement, it's really. It's coming out of your bylaws that's been there for ages.
Okay.
As we added that other language is just being kind and courteous and.
Right.
You know, and comments and that, and so.
Okay, so I'm going to call this for anything on or off the agenda, this is the time set aside for that. If anybody has any public comment on anything on or off the agenda.
I did write my name down, so Marjorie Hans Torland, Old Lasalle, and I apologize for the voice. I've been out in the wind all day, so it's really rough, but I, I appreciate your patience. I just want to clear up a few misgivings that some people have had about the survey that our group took earlier this year. And we had the results that we presented to the county commission and to you and me. So following some contentious meetings, we kind of formed a little citizens committee, myself, my husband, Shannon and Julia Brooks, Dave and Sarah Goodman, Wes and Solah Hunt, and a number of volunteers from Blanning, Monticello, and Eastland and Lasalle. We formulated a survey that was really targeted to the unincorporated areas and the needs and wants. And problems that the unincorporated citizens had with that twenty twenty-five LUDMEL. So we devised a survey, which took several weeks, we collectively put in hundreds of hours, countless miles, and approximately five hundred dollars of money out of our pockets to make the print copies of the survey, and we also created an online version that people could access. We had grassroots volunteers throughout all of those areas mentioned, who took the surveys to homes, to people who couldn't access it online. And we asked the volunteers to stay in the homes while the surveys were filled out. We wanted the results to be as honest as possible, so we asked them to watch the surveys being filled out and collect them so that we didn't have duplications or misrepresentations. The process took several months and was completed in May. And gounding the print copies and online results, we had two hundred and thirty-six responses. So this also included people who live in the incorporated, incorporated areas who have property with an address in unincorporated, so we really tried to cover that thoroughly. The key findings were that the residents want the rural definition to be clear as intentional self-reliance with low population or large acreage homesteads. While viewing urban areas with clustered infrastructure, rejecting the idea of rural land as merely pre-urban or something that will be urban in the future. They also felt that there was a crisis of representation and communication was a big problem. The residents felt very much that they, they didn't, they didn't have a good communication with the county or this. Just real quickly, we will send the results and all of this information to you. I guess we send it through Mac so that you have access to that as kind of a pulse of the unincorporated parts of the county. Thanks.
Thanks, Marjorie.
Thank you.
Just real quick.
Yes.
The results that you send, will I have the questions?
Yes, yeah, we'll send everything.
I thought, I thought Shannon had already sent all that.
He did, he did, and the reason we're kind of re-presenting this is because we've been to a couple of meetings where there were misgivings about the results or they didn't really understand the process, and I just, I want everyone to know that this was a really hard effort, and it was a good faith effort, we did the best that we could with no cost to the county. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marjorie.
Anyone online? Unmute yourself if you would like to speak. Okay. Land use ordinance discussion and direction, Matt McDonald.
Yeah, so this one here, I just wanted to, you know, as we go through and we kind of got directed to fix the general plan, a lot of, a lot of people still have that sentiment, is a, we don't just table the land use ordinance off to the side while we fix the general plan, let's do them in tandem of one another. So a lot of this, I hear, just in, in planning commission meetings, you know, there's just been comments made, okay, you know, let's take it back to the twenty-eleven, or, you know, let's add this to the twenty-twenty-five, and so really, I just need the clarification from you as a planning commissioner of what the next steps are and what you want me to focus on, you know, the question looming out there is, you know, do we take it back to the twenty-eleven ordinance and start all over again? Which is fine, it's up to you, you kind of hear that public sentiment, keep it simple as possible. When you look at, just even today, I was noticing our, our agenda packet is thicker than the twenty-eleven ordinance that's on your chairs. Now, I'm like, that, yeah, that says something, you know, and so it's just kind of getting that overall guidance and direction from you guys, where you want me to go with this. You know, as you, you bring up the past through this, as we did have a similar, a similar scenario that played out when we took the twenty-twenty-two, the twenty-twenty-two beginning point that we used was a modification of the twenty-eleven, trying to catch up into, you know, creating it more legal, adding the legal language back in, and then from there, we took off and did the twenty-twenty-five. And so I just kind of need that, as I hear comments, that we should just take it back to twenty-twenty-eleven, add those sections that legal requires to be in there so that we're in compliance with state code. And then add those items that are missing, like clamping, overnight rentals, so that we have that a little bit more detailed in there. Keep the definitions, because definitions, I think TC had mentioned last time, is he really likes the definitions because we needed more things to mind. You heard from the ombudsman's office in his presentation about developing a process, if, if we have the use table still being a part of this, then, so we miss a use on there that somebody may come forward, then create and develop that process in the ordinance so that if there is something missing, that all things aren't prohibited, it's like, here's, here's the process that if you need to add it at use, you know, down the line, then, then we can do so, but create that formality within the ordinance itself. And so I think we can carve out some sections, you know, when we talk about in the general plan, the agricultural protection zone, that really kind of needs to be a different standalone ordinance, different standalone process, and so, so there's different avenues that I think we can carve this up. I just need to get that direction from you, is do you want me to start working on bringing back the twenty-twenty-five, chip away at that, or start from twenty-eleven, go from there, or twenty-two?
When you refer in the twenty-two, that's when we were doing with Alex, correct?
The twenty-twenty-two was with Alex and Scott, and that kind of hit this, a similar brick wall, is okay, the public's not ready for this, and let's table it, and so we did, and here we are, twenty-twenty-five, almost twenty-twenty-six.
Was there pushback on twenty, the twenty-twenty-two version, or was it just that Alex left? And we were without a planning committee director for a while?
Well, no, that was, one of the reasons, yeah, that you lose employees oftentimes can be that public, that public process, and I remember he had brought it to several work sessions, I can't remember if he had a public hearing on it, but it was just kind of that rhetoric that he was hearing, it's like, we're going to hold this, and then you're right, I think a lot of that is Alex left about that time, and, and Scott was soon after.
Yeah, yeah.
So twenty-twenty-two evolved into twenty-twenty-five?
Correct, yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
But I remember that the definitions were really critical, that Alex really emphasized that we.
They will still be.
And that's, that's where most of the definitions were brought from, I think.
Right, because, so if we're, when you say go back to twenty-eleven, the definitions are, not, yeah, we would be adding a lot more definitions to twenty-eleven. So we're trying, trying to make the twenty-eleven evolve into kind of a new twenty-twenty-five version?
Twenty's twenty-six, yeah.
Twenty-twenty-six version.
Let's just call it seven.
I have a question, I have a, I have a question about that. One of the things that Kristen repeatedly said was that twenty-eleven was much stricter than what she, what was being proposed for twenty. Well, that's what she said, so.
Use table was.
She said it was much stricter, and, and people were complaining about it because it hadn't been enforced. Yeah, so is it stricter or is it not? That's one question, and what would happen to all the Spanish Valley stuff with the twenty-eleven?
Yeah, so.
So two questions.
Spanish Valley came along in twenty-nineteen. The thoughts behind going back to the twenty-eleven is incorporating Spanish Valley into the twenty-eleven and still keeping one countywide ordinance instead of creating this two separate. So like, for example, when you look at conditional uses in the Spanish Valley ordinance, there's not the process for conditional use. It talks about it in there, and it talks about permitted uses can be conditional, but you got to go back to the twenty-eleven to figure out, okay, what do they need on a conditional use? So there's discrepancies in between the two, tying them together, we would close those discrepancies. And then just, when I think about, okay, what do we do with our zoning? You know, we had the, the recreation zone in there, you know, do we get rid of that and just keep it? The mixed use and agriculture and, and go back to that simplistic form, but yet in Spanish Valley, you have Spanish Valley residential and, you know, your highway commercial, and so you have more of the flex zones, and how do we kind of mesh those two together into one, we would have to take a look at it and give it our best attempt. But I think overall, kind of, when you look at to the twenty-twenty-five stricter, it had more regulatory items in there, so more regulations within the, the twenty-twenty-five compared to the twenty-twenty-eleven. You're, you're still going to have to have, you know, that, that regulation side of it, that's what zoning does. But, you know, it's, it's trying to, when I read through the twenty-eleven, twenty-eleven is really easy to apply and really easy to, to, to utilize, and I think when I, when I hear from the public, you know, your twenty-twenty-five is so extensive and so many different chapters and so much more to understand. I think if we look for that middle ground of, you know, trying to create a document that's simple, that's easy to apply, that developers, even, we get a lot of calls, you know, just real estate agents, people looking at investing in property and like, hey, what, what zoning fits here and what can I do with that? And, and it's making sure that when we get those questions or anybody out on the street, as they read through there, you should be able to understand fairly easy, you know, without having to go to different chapters of what, what they can do with their property. And so it's trying to get back to that, simple in nature, yet adding the legal components that are required from the state land use code, making sure we're compliant there, we don't have the process for overnight rentals, we need to include that right now, we have that, the ordinance that was approved in twenty-twenty-four that prohibits, you know, the overnight rentals in the Spanish Valley residential. It's taking a look at that and trying to combine it all back into one simpler, easier to read.
So, what, from what you just said, the revision of twenty-eleven to be the twenty-twenty-six, it still have the regulatory features that the twenty-twenty-five currently have, right?
Some of it, and it's up to you, you guys are the ones that are going to dictate.
And it would have more definitions. The zones might be reduced, the number of zones might be more simplified. But what I'm afraid is going to happen is we're just turning twenty-eleven into twenty-twenty-five. You know what I mean? I don't see a whole lot, like, when you say simplify, to me, twenty-eleven is this simple, and when you add definitions and you start adding all the regulatory pieces and the state stuff, you're still ammuning up to what we have right now in a draft form.
Yes.
Essentially, I, I just feel.
I, I understand I'm still the new guy here, right, but you, you said twenty-eleven was simple and easy to use, but just in the little bit of time I've been here, I think there's been two, three, I don't know, a handful of lawsuits or litigation that have come forth based on broken processes or broken things inside twenty-eleven, right?
Yep, and we'd have to fix that.
We've got to fix that, right, okay.
Well, and a lot of it, I think, is a, a conflict between this Spanish Valley portion. This, and you have to remember, the Spanish Valley was a draft form, so that was where, that was the starting point. So imagine you're, you're undertaking twenty-twenty-five now, if we adopted that in a draft form without all of the feedback and listening to the public comments, at that draft level, when you guys seen twenty-twenty-five, that was what was adopted. And so it was incomplete, it was supposed to be incomplete because the draft was really to generate the ideas. You'll see tonight on the general plan, that's in draft form. And so it's just to give you those ideas of what can be and what can happen, it's not intended to be that final adopted piece. They, we had presented the final adopted piece to the commissioners and the commissioners chose to adopt that draft form. And so that's kind of really where a lot of the lawsuits come, is that incompleteness, because you take like the conditional use, well, now I got to revert back to the twenty-eleven to figure out conditional use.
Yeah.
You know, because it's not in the Spanish Valley, and so it's things like that, when you look at accessory dwelling units, that wasn't well defined, and we defined it in twenty-twenty-four so that we could have that piece in there that it specific, you know, this is, this is how long an overnight rental, we defined overnight rental because it wasn't in the Spanish Valley. So we had to make those definitions in twenty-twenty-four to hopefully stop some of these legal battles that we had.
Yeah.
Why can't we take the draft twenty-twenty-five and start getting?
Taking sections out.
I think it'd be easier to go from the two thousand eleven and add what you need in than the twenty-five and strip it. Because I think, I think if you were to take the two thousand eleven, add the definitions, because that's been one of the biggest problems with two thousand eleven, the definitions and the. The use table. The use table is, is a big thing. Um, but at the same time, it's the, the way you approach things. Um, it, and as an administrator for planning zoning, being able to approach things and knowing which direction you need to go. Is very hard to determine with the writing that's in the two thousand eleven. That's why we have all the problems we do. Because two thousand eleven is a whole much better than the two thousand nineteen draft.
Yes, absolutely.
So, and the two thousand nineteen draft is kind of our twenty five without anybody getting a look at it. Because that's, that's what we got nailed with.
That's it.
And I mean, it got, because there, I mean, there was nothing completed in that ordinance, nothing. By chapter, by chapter, by chapter, though, I mean. Interpretations of it. Well, no, it shouldn't be that way. It should be pretty black and white where it doesn't take an attorney to interpret the law. Or the ordinance that's before you. You shouldn't have to have an attorney to.
If you try to follow the processes in that dang thing, that's very evident.
Yes.
Absolutely.
I think we all agree.
So, I mean, to me, I think we take the two thousand eleven ordinance, we, we use our use table, our definitions, because that's a big thing. And then the process of everything that we do. And, you know, understanding our conditional uses, understanding.
Making sure the processes.
Because I think if we go to twenty five and try to strip it back, we go into that. Never ending circle.
It's like me in minutes. What do I keep out?
And I mean, there was a lot of effort and time put into it and a lot of people spent a lot of time on it, but. Uh, you know, after, you know, after the last three or four months talking to people, I mean, it's. It's pretty evident that the majority of your neighbors are like, man, we do not live in a city. Quit trying to make us live in a city.
That's fair. Uh, the only other thing I'd want to address is the actual number of zones or the zones that we have. I think we have to have some work to do consolidating those.
If we consolidate Spanish Valley into that, you know, you're gonna have to incorporate some of those or do you change Spanish Valley to the RR one or?
Spanish Valley just needs to be drug in with everybody else, same thing. And then we do need to look at mapping. I mean, and. We, we've approached it in the wrong way. We need to approach it in a. And this is the hard thing, especially Spanish Valley and La Salle and places like that where you got such mixed. Things that are going on because everything's been legal for so many years, or maybe legal. We're, we're going with the maybe legal, but it's been going for so many years. I mean, there's a lot of those places out there we gotta look at that's like, okay. So this was not actually a legal use in two thousand eleven ordinance. You're, I mean, we're gonna, you're gonna be grandfathered in. It's gonna be a non-conforming use, but if you ever change the use, it goes back to what we're doing here. Because I mean, if this was a residential area, um, with a majority of residential, that's what it needs to stay. And so we're not gonna pull from the people that have had business since before the nineteen ordinance. Um, but I, I think that's the direction we need to go. But we need to, I think we need to have an ordinance in place that works for. The zones before we even touch the maps. Because you need to know, when you start looking at a map to say, okay, this is, this fits on this. Well, how do you know if it fits if we haven't finished the ordinance for it? You know, if you don't know exactly everything that is in that zone, the, the ordinance for that zone, you don't know how to map that area.
Well, I've, I've got. I've got an issue with agriculture, because if you look at what's in the general plan that has not been changed, it's really talks about. Um, agriculture is related to food production. I think it's pretty, you know, and ancillary things. And we have thrown, I'm just looking at. At what we've thrown in there. We've put, like, a yoga studio is now in our use table. Permitted in agriculture. So I think agriculture is really problematic.
That's called rolling in the hay. That's called rolling in the hay.
Got it, got it.
Ju- just for the fact that our ag producers, we don't want to limit the ways that they can make their land.
Well, well, then we just need to change the language in our general plan, because that has not been touched, what agriculture is in the general plan. So we either open, agriculture does seem to be a misnomer if we're putting stuff like. You know, dance studios in there and, um, I mean, I'm just looking, that's just page one.
Yeah, very broad.
Uh, yeah, equipment rental conference center is now allowed in agriculture. Yeah, I. I think there's a problem with twenty eleven and agriculture and the general plan.
We can fix that. Here are the ones.
Well, the county commission wanted to go through the twenty twenty five, chapter by chapter, last time I remember. That was the plan. I don't know what they're thinking now, but I don't see why. We would change that direction. They wanted to be involved with this whole process. If we go back now and say, never mind twenty twenty five, we would, you know, they still wanna be involved. So. How do we keep them involved?
They are involved by looking at what we recommended them.
We had a meeting with them.
Hmm, a couple of weeks ago.
Couple of weeks ago. I was online, so. But what I got out of that was they really just wanna see the, the public input on this and just collaboration. That was the main thing that I got out of it, was there.
I have one that's like, hey, let's, let's go back to simple.
Yeah, yeah. And that's what we're, that's what we need to do.
They didn't really say anything about wanting to go through twenty twenty five, chapter by chapter, or anything like that. It was just, what, we just need. Full collaboration with the public and with the commission.
Well, I think that's good because that, that kind of made me think that this process was gonna take way longer. They were gonna go through it and we were gonna go through it and then we're gonna have to collaborate. But the only other point I wanna make again about Spanish Valley, trying to incorporate them into the entire countywide ordinance. Is that because we have so much SITLA land up there, there is already a blueprint for a plan for Spanish Valley that largely. Is going to be driven by SITLA. And if we zone ourselves in a, in a way that is not compatible with what they're doing. I think we could be missing the boat, like for private property owners. Like, if there, I think there needs to be consistency with what they're doing or planning to do in Spanish Valley and what. And that's why I love simple for the rest of unincorporated areas and protecting that ag land. But we don't have a lot of ag land anymore in Spanish Valley. We are looking like urban. Quite frankly, thanks to sewer and water. Um, and.
It's the growth is taking place there.
But it's just, um, still that same point. What's right for unincorporated. Parts of San Juan County outside of San, Spanish Valley is, the needs are so different because we are urbanizing. We are getting denser. And that's polar opposite than what the rest of the county wants for their areas. And trying to, um. Put those two things together is. I, I, I still feel like at the end of this whole process, we're still gonna be saying. I think people in Spanish Valley are still gonna come up and say, but wait. That doesn't work for us. We want more regulations. Or we want, um, to be able to. Do more things like yoga studios and this and that. And, um, that's not gonna fly in other places so much.
But you look at like Grand County, they got their blanket ordinance for the county. Most of it's, you know, brought in because of the people close to the Moa area. Thompson, the edge of Green River, Cisco, other places like that, still are following the same ordinance. Because it's blanket for the county, it's a county ordinance. So in my mind on something like that, if. If, 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 say you add in your multi-use on your map with definitions of what that is. Or one or two extra things like we have on the twenty five, and those are placed in more rural or rural areas. Or more dense areas, to where you're not utilizing them in the more rural areas spread out, um, land. That way the ordinance is one, but you have, might have a couple more zones in these more dense populated areas. So we're keeping the same ordinance, but you have a couple more options for your denser areas to cover certain. Aspects of what the rest of the county is not looking at right now.
So it'd be like multi-use one or multi-use two, kind of things like that. Okay. It's just another name. Kind of what we already have.
I don't think La Salle was that much, like sometime in the future, we're gonna be having the same conversation we're having about Spanish Valley, about La Salle.
Most of our questions are about La Salle and Spanish Valley.
And so I think, yeah, just having those that maybe we don't put in the rural area, but it's still all in the same thing. I like that.
Well, as long as we keep in mind what is, has already been passed, what's vested that SITLA is doing as far as the plan. As we're going through, thinking about.
Well, and we have to, I mean, because of the majority landowners, so. I like it. It's a pile of work to do.
What would be the timeline for something like this, Mac?
I was waiting for this discussion first.
Mac will have this wrapped up.
Based on what you heard, what do you, I mean, what do you think the timeline is?
How do you summarize all that, man? Feel free to use AI.
I think for me, as long as we have a direction for staff to go and we can start working on that direction. Bring, you know, some of those drafts back to you. So, okay, this is what we're thinking. Do you like this? As long as we're advancing forward in that, then I, I mean, the, the timeline, it's not gonna be anytime soon, but I think. I think we forward, we owe the public that. To get it right. How do you get it right? You know, and then making sure that, you know, we may not satisfy everybody in the public, but. You know, I think we need to at least attempt to give them, you know, put your best foot forward and. We heard you, we listened, and let's try this. I also, in that thought, you know, you disenfranchise some of those. Public members are like, hey, I like the twenty twenty five, and will you add this? And we, we made those changes. And so it's kind of. Pushing them out to satisfy this other piece. Um, so it could, it'll take a minute to go through, but I think. I think it's our responsibility overall to, to try to get it as best as possible. And I know that. After hearing all the comments on the twenty twenty five. There were not a lot that were in support of. There were some, you know, but it was like, hey, no, try again. That was the loud and clear message that, that we received on both commissions was. Yeah, you guys need to try again. Don't approve this. And so.
So you wanna keep the use table?
No, I'm just looking at the use table and I'm thinking what the general plan says. And I'm thinking about what twenty eleven says ag is. And. They are not consistent. They're extremely inconsistent.
So why don't we start with that? Let's, let's, let's send out a, a blank use table like that. And we all get to do our homework on it before we come back next time. And we come in, we compare what we're thought, what our thoughts are. So it's not just, okay, line one. Who's for this, who's for this? It, we, you know, we can have a little bit of time to go through them ourselves individually and then bring it back with our own thoughts on it. And then it'll speed up the discussion, not, not have so much time here.
I really am sorry to cut you off there. I really love the, the, um, the control districts that we have in the twenty eleven. Where, and some of those uses, it adds that language unless, you know, it gives the option to the planning commission. That all other uses that are in harmony with this can be approved. And that kind of gets rid of a lot of the use table. And it puts, it puts on us on the planning commission to determine if this is in harmony with this zone. And you had a good argument, it went back and forth with planning commission members, and that's normal. That's a good thing. Um, you know, because you, you determined whether or not this fits the zone. And is it in harmony with everything around it, the adjacent properties? And, and so you determine that. And so when I think about missing something on the use table, it's having that process that we bring back this new use to you. And you determine if it fits or if it doesn't fit.
Okay, because that comes down to the subject, it's subjective, first of all, and it comes down to the interest of whoever is. On the planning commission at the time that argument is being had. It's not black and white. And I thought we want black and white. And I thought we wanted a process in place that is black and white for people to bring those uses. And not have a, well, so and so doesn't like coffee shops. And they don't think it's in harmony just cuz they say so. You know, um, because. It's so subjective. You don't have to have a good reason to, to say you think it is or isn't, right? I mean, as we saw.
I mean, travel center.
It comes down to just people's personal opinions. And so I don't think that's representative of the larger public, because. As we know, there's a lot of people saying they don't think it's in harmony and did that, and, you know, that still didn't resonate.
Subjected to the planning, and that's why you have planning commissions.
Yeah, and that's why you stack them.
That's why you stack them.
I think as I go though, the, the definitions and that kind of stuff, like if there's the definitions of all of these things in there. It could, it would help, cuz like your definition of harmony versus mine and what I see from the neighborhood could be totally different. But definitions could really help us make that decision instead of just a total like, well, here's my opinion.
Well, and that, that's why I think we need to bring the definitions over to the two thousand eleven, because that's the most important thing.
That is.
Is defining all your ordinance. And if you can't, it, it's all just by interpretation. I mean, nothing's actually defined at that point.
So I don't disagree, but I think a combination of all of these fixes will really.
And kind of what Anne's saying there too is, you know, instead of it being just to. That, that whole in harmony thing is, you know, we address these things as they come. So if there's something that comes in that's not on our use. We address it and we make it the law at that point. You know, this is, okay, so we've decided that this is something. That needs to be in the use table and it fits this, this, and this area. Or it only fits this one. And if it's not in here. But that, I mean, that's how it's, it's gonna be a learning process till the end of our time here. There's always gonna be something new coming in. And I think we just address those, those little things as they come, instead of trying to bury everything from day one. Because we're gonna miss something. So instead of spending, you know, the next seven years trying to do this again. Let's get it in, and then if we, if there is something missed and, whether we bring it to our own attention, okay, so. I was talking to somebody the other day, or somebody brings something to us, it's like, okay, now we have the time. To see where this would fit, if this is gonna fit in this zoning, this zoning, this zoning, and what definitions in with it.
But we know there's a lot of things in twenty twenty five that are likely. Or should be on the use table, because we know somebody wants to do yoga studio, right? We know that. There are gonna be outliers, but when they come up, those are the ones that I'm talking about, those outlier things that we can't think of.
Right.
But there are some standard things that we might as well put on the use table, right?
Yeah, if it's something in your head and it's something that we can throw down, I mean, like, like I was saying, if we send this out, so everybody has a month to go through it. If there's certain things that you can think of, add it to the bottom of the list and bring it in to our next meeting. That's something we can go over. And start, you know, we start right there at the use table.
Just so I'm clear, Anne, are you talking about adding to the twenty eleven use table or the proposed twenty five use table?
Well, there's things on the twenty twenty five that I think are standard things, right? There's a lot of stuff on there. I mean, especially if we want economic growth. We want as many things, like, yes, do these things. So.
I would propose starting with twenty five.
All right, so we're, somehow we're going to make twenty eleven and twenty twenty five mate.
And the baby's gonna be beautiful.
It's gonna be like a camel with two humps.
I would be in that Spanish Valley column.
There isn't a column.
It would be so much easier. I was thinking that earlier too.
So I was looking at the twenty twenty five blood mo online, and it's been updated in the sense that somebody has gone through and color coded it. Yellow, red, highlighted in yellow. There's red that's administrative, what was the code?
I think that was Kristen.
So just speaking to that, whatever. If we're gonna start with twenty eleven and we're gonna add to it, then we need to have that draft for the public to be seeing in real time.
I agree. I agree.
You know what I mean? Like, we, cause that was the attempt, was to be transparent and show these changes, um.
Put a date on it that it was revised and then.
Yeah, we need a working document for people to see online. And I think the color coding is quite, is quite good. I, I didn't really understand what the codes totally meant.
A little better legend on it.
Yeah, we might need to, cause red was discussed updates, but it just, I guess it was just discussion versus administrative changes were orange, things that were required by the state turned blue, or were added in and colored blue, which is very helpful, I think, for people to see, oh, we, that's something we don't get a choice on, right? So, so people need to see the differences. But yeah, I, I mean, if, if this is what we're starting from, we might even need something like brought over from twenty twenty-five, you know, pulled from twenty twenty-five. So people could see that's the use table.
Yep.
But, so we're trying to mesh, um, cause, cause that is a comment, you know, a concern, people really want to see, um, the changes. Depicted in the ordinance.
I think so too.
So we're looking at definitions from twenty-two.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-two, twenty-five.
Yeah.
Kind of there, they were kind of the same.
Definitions that added to it.
And then we're looking at the use table from the twenty-five, and then bringing the two thousand eleven ordinance into that and making them mesh together. And then we just work on it, and I mean, it's public.
Adding Spanish Valley for flavor.
Yes, we are not adding, Spanish Valley is not subject to being separate from the county.
Yeah. Bring, bring Spanish Valley in.
Yep. Get everything on the same page.
See what it looks like.
And then after we have an ordinance in place with definitions and use table and everything looks great, then let's look at what fits where. Cause I mean, it's, it's hard to put anything anywhere if you don't know exactly what you're putting there.
Yeah, the zones that are gonna be there.
Mm-hmm.
What about roads?
What about roads?
Um, the regulations around roads and maintenance and, and those, like, in the twenty twenty-five, we have a section that talks about roads, correct?
There, yeah, and there's, there's quite a few things that we need to bring over like that.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying, are we just gonna end up bringing it over?
Yeah.
Well, like I say, it's gonna be quicker to bring over a couple of things than it is to strip down twenty-five.
Well, either way, it's, I guess it's the same end, depending, you know.
But I think this is a better base to start with and work up from this than taking, tipping your Christmas tree upside down, stripping it down.
Well, cause we still have AUs and RVs and, you know, manufactured homes, like the overlay or the airstrip.
What overlay?
No overlay.
We don't do overlays.
Overlay zone, the air transfer overlay zone, which is, I think, something.
That's a requirement.
With requirement.
Yep.
So, you know, I'm just saying.
But if that's the only overlay district that you have is just the airport, then it makes it a lot easier. You take like, you know, tonight on your agenda, you have, um, the discussion with, um, the Wilson Arch, the homes at Wilson Arch. Um, when you look at that one outside of, so those are overnight rentals that he's trying to get approved there at Wilson Arch. Well, you, you go into Spanish Valley to get those into that district there, the same district, same highway corridor, a thousand feet, to get those into there. Now, you have to do the overlay district on there, and so you'll get rid of kind of that overnight overlay district out of Spanish Valley and.
But Wilson Arch isn't in Spanish Valley.
It's not, no. So you're applying two different methods.
Within how many miles?
Cause if you think of the, that overnight rental, the residential that turned to overnight rental, we had to do a residential, that overnight overlay district on top of that to get the overnight rentals into that, cause the Spanish Valley ordinance required that difference.
Into Wilson Arch?
No.
No, no, just in comparison.
Oh, okay.
And so you, you kind of, by blending twenty eleven, you get rid of those overnight overlay districts altogether.
Yep.
I don't have enough information on that to have an opinion. I just think people have said that they're a useful tool, you know, they're playing in planning.
So we gotta create that process.
We're not ready for that, then maybe we're just not ready.
Mm-hmm. But in the Spanish Valley residential, they're prohibited now, and they can't get that, they can't even get the overlay district onto the SPR zone.
Which they shouldn't have at the beginning.
Cause there's, according to some, too many.
Yeah.
But you take outside of Blanding or Wilson Arch, it's a prime example. Now, there, you don't have as many.
Okay, I think we got a good plan.
Okay.
So what, just in a nutshell there?
Mixing the two, marrying them together.
Okay.
I mean, is, this is not an actual item, it's just discussion.
No, this is just literally a discussion to get direction from you.
Okay, so what would we expect next meeting?
So next meeting, we'll bring in kind of a draft ideas. Okay, this is what we're seeing, this is what I heard, and have you take a look at it and give further direction from there.
What about what Lloyd said about starting with the use table?
Yeah, let, allow.
If we keep the use table in, then that means we take the use table out of twenty eleven, um, and that becomes the use table.
No, I think we were talking about using the twenty-five one.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
But I think, I think it is one thing that we all need to do some homework on, and then, and, and give, give it some good thought at home, and then when we get here, it's a little easier for us to mesh out, so.
Which is, our homework is to decide or think about what zones those uses are appropriated.
Yeah.
So when you say blank, it means that.
Get rid of all the little X's and the.
All the Ps and Cs. Get rid of the Ps and Cs, but we're gonna keep all of the uses.
Yeah, and then, like I say, I mean, if there's something that you can think of that we missed in the beginning, just add it in the bottom and think about what it works best in.
Well, and it's the thinking that we're going to keep those same categories of zones?
I think as we do our homework, we might find something that is like, this is irrelevant, or maybe you should add another or something.
Well, no, I'm talking about like recreation support. We're gonna keep that and, and.
If we want.
I don't know.
If you want, yeah.
So we could blank out the zones at the top, and we could, and.
Yeah, that's your opinion, yes.
Yeah, when you're doing your homework, you make it however you want.
Yep. Yeah, if you don't think that zone belongs in our county, just X that whole thing out and.
Okay.
I think it'll make it a little easier for us to work through it versus just, you know, somebody running through the computer so fast you can't read it as you're going through them. Like, that way we all have time to go over it, and then we can mesh it out as a group.
Okay.
Cool.
I can understand it, you see.
But at the very least, next meeting, we can take.
What's your thought?
Well, so. I think we're gonna have a, a, what mine's gonna look like, I'll tell you right now. It's gonna look like a Spanish Valley residential. It's pretty dang restrictive, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then you're gonna have two or three other zones for the rest of the county. It's gonna be pretty dang open.
Which, and, and, and maybe that's.
Immunity commercial.
Yeah.
And I mean, that's kind of what it is, it's, a, and that's what's gonna help make it more functional for the entire county.
Yeah.
Is having the multi-zones in there, having more zones to where the, the bigger areas, last dance areas, you're gonna have one or two zones, or maybe three, that have a lot less restrictive, and you're absolutely correct. I mean, that's.
Yeah, and I'll be honest with you, if, if this body doesn't start in that place, eventually we're gonna get there. Right, cause there hasn't been a soul that's come in here that's asked for a rezone or a, you know, something added to the use table or whatever, and we're like, no. We, we, we're, this body always seems to add, you know.
Right, yeah.
Very responsive to the public's needs, so.
Yeah.
Might as well do what we can to start there.
And we've heard a lot of the public at this point, which helps you in what you're doing on your use table. All right, I say we move on.
Okay. Okay. We will do that.
Next is our general plan discussion and direction from Mac.
Okay, on this one here, um, I've gone through the general plan, so just as a reminder, the only section in the general plan that we're really looking at right now is the land use section. And so in that land use section, you're required by state code to have specific items in there, and so I provided you with Utah code. All of you have that. Um, if you look at the general plan process, and it kind of gives you from the state code perspective of what we're supposed to do and who's, who's really in charge of making the modifications or. It rests within the planning commission to work with the public in creating the general plan sections. And so we're taking our twenty eighteen land use section of the general plan. So if you go down to paragraph two, these are the minimums, minimum requirements, and in that it talks about the land use element. And in that land use element section, there are four items that have to be within the general plan. It's four items. It's all you really have to have. Everything else is kind of more of your goal orients and things like that, your, your appendix, your maps that are required. So on item A, uh, when you look at this, you're supposed to designate the long-term goals and the proposed extent. A general distribution and location of land for housing for residents of various income levels. Business, industry, agricultural, recreation, education, public buildings and grounds, open space, and other categories that public and private uses of land is appropriate. That's one item. The other one includes a statement of the projections for and standards of population density and building intensity recommended for the various land use categories covered by the plan. Um, C is coordinated, coordinated to integrate the land use elements with water use and preservation. Now, that's one piece that's not in our general plans that we've gotta add. Um, and then that final one, you've gotta account for the effective land use categories and land uses on water demand. This is just recently added, um, when you talk to the stated further on in the general, general plan, you're supposed to have a section, um, that encompasses water integration. Uh, and so that one, we've gotta, we've gotta work on a little bit more. That one's, that one's pretty intensive to, to get the, that piece to it. But in the land use, you still have to be cognizant and reflective of kind of that future growth and water availability. And if you think about it in the context that as we're going through our zoning right now, and all of a sudden if we, we create in all of our zones, we're allowing for a higher density population in all of these zones, but yet when it hits subdivision and we find out that, you know, one, it, it doesn't percolate and it doesn't leach. And so if you add a high density to that, well, what are you doing with your sewage? Um, the other one is if you don't have water available at all, and you're maxed out on the wells, well, how, how is that high-density zone now going to work in that area? And so you kind of have to be cognizant of that in that land use side of it. And so what I provided, uh, on the screen is just kind of options, this isn't, this is literally what I would be doing with, with the land use ordinance, is bringing to you just thoughts and options. Where do you take it from here is really up to you. I heard your discussion when, you know, you talked about the Spanish Valley area and making sure that that were reflected of that, that community structure plan that SITL passed, that we, the commission had approved, both bodies. Um, and so I add, integrated that piece to it. When you look at kind of up at the top, when I started down here, you know, just leaving that simple sentence on tourism, to me, I'm like, man, it, it kind of digs on, on tourism, but yet a lot of our businesses focus on tourism. And so I added more to that, just in recognition that since twenty eighteen, overnight rentals have changed, and it's things that, you know, we want to incorporate. From what I hear from you, it's like, yeah, we wanna welcome more overnight rentals, let's just spread it out throughout the area. Well, I wanted the general plan to reflect that, that we don't necessarily see tourism as a negative item. And so that's kind of why you see this, this in there, but I also wanted to be cognizant of the fact that overnight rentals also takes the affordable housing stock out. You know, and so we've got to counterbalance that with, with how do we get more affordable housing into our zoning and our processes, because, yeah, we, yeah, yeah. Totally. Because we wanna welcome overnight rentals, but we also need affordable housing, and right now it's taking the available affordable housing stock and inventory, and this is not just a San Juan County, there's problem, this is nationwide, they're seeing the same thing, is the afford, the overnight rentals are just, it's a hot item, and, and we've got to be cognizant of that. And so as I've made the changes through here, um, I've highlighted the annexation plans that both Monticello and Blanding have. Um, as the overall guidance of the general plan is focus more of the development closer to the municipalities, cities and towns that have the infrastructure. But yeah, we also need to be cognizant of the fact, like Spanish Valley, um, you know, they have their own water system now, they have infrastructure. And so because of that, you're, you have more potential for development, but yet we also need to have that studied and that water element that's missing in here, um, because a water system is designed at a capacity, and if we max that capacity, or if it's already maxed, by allowing a higher density into those areas could actually be detrimental on those special service districts that are within the county. On here, kind of going back to, um, Ms. Mon, so Marjorie brought up a point in her public comments, the public survey. The twenty eighteen public survey in here obviously would be out of date. And so we're hoping to be able to utilize some of the, the responses and answers to the survey that she's done in place of what was there in the past. It's just updated data, and I'd rather use updated, more current data than sticking with the twenty eighteen. So that's kind of where you see that section crossed out, and so we'll work on that one to get more of the results from that survey, but also we did um, Higher Points Housing Survey that kind of gave us a little more details, for example, and that survey pointed out that if we don't do something with our affordable housing issue here in the county, we will continue to see a loss of population, and it's drastic over time.
You know, Mac, has, has the county ever considered, um, taxing short-term rentals? Um, and then giving a credit to people who have rentals for long-term renters? You know, giving, giving some sort of a, an incentive to do a long-term rental, since there, I mean, people with short-term rentals, I see it sixty-three percent in Spanish Valley is what this says. Um, you know.
They do pay a ta, a different tax. They have a, a transient rent tax that they have to pay.
Taxes are higher too.
Yeah.
Yeah, but somehow or another, there should be, there should be an incentive for people to
Long-term rent.
To create long-term rentals, and you know, I, I, and it seems money is the way to do it. And I think it's something the county ought to consider.
Yeah, good point.
Yeah, you'll be the only person.
And this is, this is one of them that's include recreational support zone language, so in, you know, we've got industrial, commercial, multi-use. And then if we're adding a new use, you know, we've got to be reflective of that new use in here as well. When you get further down, um, anticipated changes, this is just really anticipating what the future is going to be, and how do you, how do you project that out throughout time, uh, but yet anticipate some of the things that we're seeing coming down the line, like your overnight rentals, um, SITL is one of those that, you know, it's, it hasn't come to fruition yet, but yet we know it's coming type thing, and so.
And we'll back up, just to scosh, back up to, uh, transitional, what do you call it?
Transition area? What are you looking at?
Oh, there it is.
Land use under Ag.
Forty, in the, go down one more page. There you go, transition area. So that's not a zone in twenty eleven, right?
Right.
But, but that's what we're trying to capture in here is the different zones in our use table. Do I understand that correctly?
Yeah. Yeah. So, kind of the way that we treat, treat this right now is by having those, those pieces within the general plan that recognize, you know, Monticello City is gonna, they anticipate growing into this area. So that's kind of what this is refer, referencing is that transitional area. Right now, it's, it's under county zoning. But we, we pay attention to what they're doing and let, through an inter-local agreement, we actually push the projects and the zoning questions to the cities to answer, so that they know best, the cities themselves, they know their transportation plan, they know their road network, they know their infrastructure better than we do. And so that transitional area is literally from a city transitioning out to unincorporated. So we've paid attention, Monticello City just went through, I don't know if you've been paying attention, but they just went through a process and developed an annexation plan, a future annexation plan. This is recognizing that fu, future annexation plan. And kind of, they will coordinate one with another on that transition. So as the general plan wants us to push all of the development, the high-density development closer to the cities, we're recognizing their capacity as well. And in that transitional area, you know, we want to make sure that all of a sudden we're not approving something that they can't afford to upkeep and manage with their infrastructure.
Awesome. So the, the little paragraph headers here, Ag, Industrial, Commercial, Multiple Use, that's not a one-for-one with zones that are actually in the blood mode. These are just kind of overviews.
Overall, overarching. We definitely support industrially, we definitely support commercial.
I think it's confusing.
Is it?
I think it's confusing. I think it should be one-to-one, or it really needs to be clearly spelled out. Because I, I have the same thought. I mean, it's, it's where I see agriculture. You know, this designation is for the maintenance and production, you know, protection of food production. I think it's got to be one-for-one.
So describe to me what you mean by one-to-one.
Well, if, if, if in our twenty eleven slash twenty twenty-five draft, we're calling something agriculture, this needs to have the same definition.
Okay.
I think I agree with that.
So transitionary could also be called future annexation zone.
Well, or, I mean, what we could do is, what we could do is actually say, these are, you know, these are the zones, these are the zones, and then, then these are other categories, like future annexation zones.
Well, but what, future annexation zones is not our purview, that's like the cities deciding that.
We're still mapping.
Yes.
We're still mapping it out in our.
But Ma, Mac said we interface with the cities around those, work with them, right? So, I, I would think if we're going to do one-for-one, our zones that are listed out here in this document as well, we also have a little border that says, we also work with the cities with their annexation plans, make sure that those spaces are zoned correctly.
Well, I don't know how technical it has to be, like matchy, matchy, because this is like a broader general idea. Because future planning commissions might want to change their zoning.
Right.
And then you have to go back and amend this again. I mean, but it catches the concept, right?
But I don't think, well, transition area captures the concept, but I don't think agriculture captures what we're doing.
Right.
Well, unless we want to use this definition.
Well, if you want to use this definition, it goes back to how I was talking about the extreme inconsistencies.
Yeah.
So what is it about this definition that is not consistent with what we want?
Yoga studios.
Yoga studio.
Well, then we were
Overnight rentals.
Remove yoga studios from Ag?
Well, but we put them in there because we had such a clamor around it.
Should be removed, right.
Okay, so.
Ag should be pretty big and broad.
Well, okay, so here's the thing about Ag in my mind. Agricultural land is shrinking. Agricultural land requires water, and as we develop, some of that, no, it doesn't?
A lot of people here dry farm as well.
Okay, so they're
It requires more rain.
So developing near Ag land is not, um, a threat to their keeping it Ag land. So water is not an issue, we, people are fine with having Ag land and no water.
I think most of it is non-irrigated, yeah.
All right, because that was my main concern is if we start doing more development on Ag, is it going to, like if they're using wells and that type of thing?
You don't see a lot of that, you see, I mean, right now, or a month ago was the time to plant winter wheat. And the expectation is when it snows, when it rains, then it covers that wheat, then it terminates, and then pops out, and then they harvest it, and it literally not, it's not irrigation lands, it's dry farming that they do.
Majority here.
Saffron, same.
Pasture.
Pastur grass, yeah, yeah. It's your, the high intensity would probably be more of your agriculture or your alfalfa fields, things like that.
I guess that's what I see out in Spanish Valley more.
And there are, I mean, around Blanding, you still have the alfalfa fields and things like that, that have that secondary water to them.
Because I know there's folks out there saying, well, there's, you know, more water being used and their wells are running dry and they're losing water out there, so.
Yeah.
I think our producers do irrigate as water is available.
Yeah, definitely a mix here and.
Just like, so it, my point is, how much do we protect Ag land from encroaching development that?
I know statewide, and, and I think that's why you see the agricultural protection zones coming to fruition more so, is, is the protection of those Ag lands. Because you do have those developers or a second generation that's coming in, and they just want to sell everything off. Those protection zones actually kind of protected, or the state has developed a, a process now where you can, you can stick them into a conservation, um, system and preserve that agricultural lands. The state, overall, when you look throughout the state, we're really concerned with development, especially, you know, you see it more further up north is, is that growth and everything is now taking, taking what used to be farmland. Yet you still have the mountain sides, sides of the mountains and mountain tops that are typically public lands. And so we're you, we're basically developing all of our agricultural lands throughout the state of Utah. So there's a big push to preserve as much as we can before it gets into a problem.
And so when you say preserve, it means you can't change it into commercial, or what?
A residential housing tax.
Conservation easement.
Twenty years.
And what about selling it? Does our state have a policy around selling it? With Ag land?
The state?
Yeah, like to foreign?
They have conservation easements that you can enter into for your, for your farmland, where they'll, they'll pay you to, for that conservation of agricultural lands. And when you, when you you kind of fast forward to San Juan County on when people pay into, trying to think of what it's called now. So if I have property and for property tax pur, purposes, I enter into, what's it called?
Green bill.
What is it?
Green bill.
Yes, thank you. I couldn't catch it on the top of my brain there. So if you have green belt status and you sell your property and they, they have to pay five years of back taxes on that property. We are required as a county to take a percentage of those funds and place into an account that is used for agriculture preservation. And so, the counties now are so, supposed to be looking at possibilities of preserving agriculture within those counties by utilizing those funds to buy property that is agriculture. And so, I mean, obviously, you think of San Juan County, we don't have a lot of money in that account, but we do set aside a percentage of that green belt payback for future agriculture and conservation.
And that's a state requirement?
It is a state requirement. I would rather see it in general plan, but Yeah, so it's kind of like this.
So I learned something. I thought the agriculture protection deal was just for, say, you've got a field that you farm, and they build some sort of housing development across the road, and those people are all bent out of shape because you're handing it to them at two o'clock in the morning, and they come in here and push for a zone change or something like that that would inhibit farming across the street. I thought when, when you talk about agricultural protections, I thought that's what that meant, is that this land is used as Ag, and if you move in next to it, you know, you've basically got no rights to complain about your neighbor farmer, right? Now, what Mac just said about restricting the sale of such farmland?
Well, that's what you're seeing to the second generation.
Yeah, and that's new to me. I didn't know that was a deal.
Yeah, second generation, it seems like, and you think about, oh, I, I grew up in.
Yeah, yeah, I, I understand why they do it, and, you know, that it happens. I guess what's new to me, or what I didn't understand, is that somehow the state or county or whatever entity could restrict such a sale.
You can't.
Am I understanding that right?
No, yeah, you can't stop the sale, it's trying to prevent the sale from happening altogether. And so it's
And by what mechanisms would you do that?
It seemed like in Farmington, they put it in a conservation easement, and that next generation, they had to keep it as open space. It was like literally, that was restricted lands and
So once you put it in there.
Yep, and then your kids.
Well, for twenty years, I think it's twenty years.
On the agricultural protection zone, it's for twenty, twenty-five years on there, but the conservation is a little bit different, it changes it. And so, and you think of the, the county, you heard, you know, a lot, a lot of fight to keep us agriculture in the county, and so, when you think of the, the zoning map, it's like, okay, we, it seems like we pivoted more to the recreation support than we did the agricultural portions of it. And so, it's like, how do you, how do you get that, that balance and, and make sure we're representing what the public really wants us to represent? And they are, I mean, this, you've heard time and time again, is, we are an agricultural county. This is like, do not try to restrict how many cows or horses and dogs, you know? It's like we are all
Businesses you can have.
We are all about that.
If you have a business on Ag land, you can get taxed commercially.
Hmm, they would.
By use.
Same with the sales tax, everything else like that.
Yep.
But if it's, if it's just used agriculture, it's taxed.
The only other transition thing that I can think of on here is when you look at Spanish Valley, you have these kind of transition zones, so the, the residential flex, commercial flex. So then, in thought, back in twenty nineteen, it was really, you have a hardline highway commercial, and then you're transitioning into neighborhood commercial, and then into neighborhood. And so they kind of had this, this transitional zoning that was placed in there. That's not what this means, but, but you kind of see that, that transitional zoning taking place within Spanish Valley.
You're doing so good, and they got you sidetracked on the transition.
Whatever.
Around that, do we need to change the wording? Like, if you want one-to-one zoning?
This one is up to you. If it's confusing to two of you, you know, then it's going to be confusing to others, the, the public, and so.
Yeah, it says designation, which means something assigned use or type of.
So like even in the, in the twenty eleven, if you flip to the last page, the twenty eleven ordinance touches on tribal lands within that ordinance itself. And so you have, right now, incorporated all of these items within.
Go up a little bit, right.
Low density?
Higher. Kind of at the start of that section, these designations will be used on future land use maps.
Yeah, there you go. We do need to do one-to-one. Oh, but it says they are not designated.
Yeah, but, but it's, it's just super confusing. It's confusing. It's confusing, yeah.
Designation, land use designation.
You got to remember that the general thing you're talking about is
Overarching. Yep.
The big umbrella.
And you do need to be consistent, but
Well, if they're
You, you, you can get caught up in making them so consistent that they're the same thing.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? One's designed to be very free, I love the other detail.
General distribution.
And you have a lot of, I mean, legally, you're not, you're not getting legal for you to do it this one way, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
The, the whole purpose of this portion from a legal perspective is, people can understand in a general way, their, some of their rights and options, so to speak, under this. And then you get into the ordinance to get the detail. So if you, if you had in here something like such-and-such prohibited throughout the county, but yet the ordinance says it's allowed, or if this says it's allowed, but the ordinance says it's prohibited, then you have a person saying, hey, you know, I have my rights.
Well, it looks like we need a low-density residential.
Right? That's our, that's our.
Our rural residential.
Well, and a lot of it, you know, in here, it encourages the, um, the one-acre parcels, and that's, that's your low, low density right there, but then you get into Spanish Valley, where now you're at a quarter acre parcel allowance. Now you have high density. Tonight's discussion with the homes at Wilson Arch somewhere is a higher density compared to the one acre.
Mac, I had, I had lots and lots of comments about how how this is written, and I don't really want to bog everybody down with it, but
Do you want to just send them through email and then?
Yeah, you're okay with that? Okay, you guys okay with that? Let me just, yeah, just to clean it up a bit, okay.
In the general, and I didn't include it, and I should have, in the general plan, under the land use section, there is a map that shows different sections of really pointed focus, so where do you want your industrial? You know, we don't want industrial at Wilson Arch, you know, where you want in, industrial closer to the cities and towns that are here. So you kind of see this, it's kind of like, for me, in my mind, I liken it to like a heat map where you want these specific uses, or, and I apologize, I didn't provide, I'll get it to you for next time. This literally today was just an attempt to start to get your minds to thinking, okay, this is what I'm seeing. What is it that you're seeing? There is, you know, obviously, I added the language in the requirements of the general plan, it, it requires you to have a section on housing, and we have that in a separate section. But what we don't have in any of the languages is affordable housing. And so I've incorporated it in here, as well as those other requirements in that, that we need that water use and preservation piece. And so, with this, behind the scenes, you know, we've, we've reached out and, you know, there's, there's been a a question, well, do we contract this out to a consultant? Pay a consultant to come in and help us with this general plan section? We felt kind of at a staff level that this should be fairly easy going through here and making the modifications, using, um, the, the community group that did the survey, using them, kind of following that, that plan that they had That did the survey, using them kind of following that, that plan that they had originally thought of as, you know, we can, we can help you. Kind of with the public and getting that public information and awareness on the changes that'll come forth from this. And so I'd like to use them instead of hiring a consultant to actually.
Wasn't the ombudsman's office going to give us some help?
So the ombudsman, you heard from the ombudsman office on the training side of it, they won't, they won't really get in here. They'll train you on land use planning. But they don't get into the weeds.
Oh, I thought, I thought that was said at that.
What they had mentioned in there when they was doing, given that presentation of the general plan. He mentioned the state has provided funds to our, our council of government or. So we do have Todd on here. Todd is with Southeastern. And he is, he's the one that, you know, he's a planner. And the ombudsman focused their attention to there. It's like, go to that council of governments and. That's what we did. Reached out to them. I'm like, hey, can we use Todd? And they agreed to let us use Todd in these efforts. Todd is, is, he's been awesome. He's been. Behind the scenes, following these land use discussions and the ordinances as you have, as we've gone throughout time in twenty twenty-five. He's kind of been there watching and giving feedback. I reached out to him. A, a long time ago with the twenty twenty-five, I'm like, hey, will you look at this? What can we do better? And he gave us some feedback on, okay, here's, here's what you can do better with the twenty twenty-five. So the ombudsman office recommended using that because the state is providing funds for that and so I did. So we do have Todd. Todd is working on, um, the water use and preservation piece of it, which is. Which is pretty substantial. It'll take us a minute to get through that piece of it, but. You know, he's, he's there with me to, to help along the way.
So what is that piece gonna encompass?
The, the water rights piece. Um, we've got to go to every special service district and. Figure out their capacity and then we have to take and. Kind of do a future growth model of what their capacity is and that future expectation of growth. And to see what those two look like. And then have this integrated plan within our land use ordinance of how everything is combined and so. I've got it and fortunately with Spanish Valley, we did this. She has been about two years now with, with Hanson where they did the study for Spanish Valley. Where we took this anticipated growth model with their capacity, it was kind of highlighted for us. In Spanish Valley is like, you really need to look at getting another water source in a different well and here's the cost. And so we've got to do that. We've got to do what we did in Spanish Valley to Eastland. You know, when I spoke to, to Eastland out here the other day, they're, they're worried about capacity as well and. You know, right next to them is this proposed potash, supposed to bring fifty new employees to the county. Well. You know, can they handle two to twenty-five new homes in Eastland? With the water system and the well that they're currently employed from, or are they already at capacity? And so we've got to look at. That element all throughout the county and the growth and. Mesh it on with what we're doing with our general plan, what we're doing with our land use ordinances. You can be in conflict of your water availability and I really think it's, it's to try to avoid what's happened in. Iron County, um, especially with Enix City where they've had such. Phenomenal growth there in Enix City and around Cedar City that they depleted the aquifer in Enix. And so once you deplete your aquifer, so that water table underground gets lower and lower and if it starts to cave in. Your, your aquifer depth, it changes it, changes your quality of water. All of that is in jeopardy and so. The state is really aggressive about making sure that we have this water element in there, in so much that we. They are anticipating that we'll have it done by the end of December and January and I think if we can show, hey, we're working on it really fast. To try to get it done, uh, but it, it takes some time. I know Todd has been, been working at, at this in Carbon County. You know, and some of the special service districts there have been like, we don't want to release our data to you because it'll be in a plan. You look at like homeland security, you know, it's like, we don't want to release that in our capacity and water. Into this plan that will be open to the public. And so there's just some of these, these concerns with having those type of elements. But nevertheless, when you look at land use and densities, you're not paying attention to the water around here. You know, I, I touched on earlier that, that fact where we had approved, we were in the process of approving a subdivision in Eastland. Who anticipated coming into Monticello to get Monticello water so that they can have residential water out there. Well. If that puts Monticello in jeopardy, then why are we approving a subdivision out here? And so it's, it's taking a look at holistically water availability, future capacity and what do we need to do?
So that could dictate where we put density on the map.
It could.
But yeah, we don't get to see where the water.
Correct. But in this water, that's why.
That it's a kind of even a national security kind of issue, but.
I'll be really interested to see like specifically how that translates into Ludmo. And what that language looks like. I mean, what are you?
They're forcing it.
Say we're gonna go do a, you know, a house count and, you know, after so many houses. No more permits here like.
For Lloyd, I mean.
Pulling up the ladder behind you or what, what's going on?
You take the, the special service district in Spanish Valley. I mean, there's a, there's a limit to, to our water and. You know, if, because of the high density that we allowed in there, that quarter acre. All of a sudden you build out, you get to build out and Lloyd doesn't have the water. What, what are we gonna do? How are we gonna meet that future capacity? It doesn't say that you can't. It's just recognizing that, you know, Lloyd has X amount of capacity. Which allows for X amount of housing and you've got to be cognizant of that in your zoning so that, you know, say that. You allow for a third of an acre instead of a quarter, um, instead and so you're trying to. Create, you know, the densities around your water availability. You know, we've heard for years now that Spanish Valley is out of water and can't, San Juan County, you need to stop development. Not allow any more homes. Well, this, that water integration component will answer those questions. Okay. Do we have water available? When you look at Spanish Valley itself, we transferred five thousand acre feet of water. Into that special service district, so we literally have the ability to tap into the Colorado River. And pull water from that, but they don't have the infrastructure yet to do that and so. The state has kind of limited us at what, five hundred shares. Uh, of acre feet of water there in Spanish Valley instead of the full five thousand.
We have the ability.
Yes.
To go to that, but we're third in line. City of Montana has first rights. Red County has second and then we're last. So if we do start depleting it, we're first to get shut off.
Yeah, we're done.
That's it. I mean, that's really how it works.
So, so I mean, like for, uh, in La Salle's case, right? Even if you stick to the one acre. Lot minimum, it'll take one large landowner to sell a parcel. And you could double the amount of homes in La Salle overnight. What is the mechanism? I guess I don't understand as far as Ludmo is concerned, what does that mechanism look like to?
Your subdivisions would have to stop, your density is gonna have to change.
But, but for them, it's different.
Put the brakes on the development, is that what you're talking about? How do we know?
So yeah, the model.
How do we know?
So when you get into these areas where it's not a, a municipality or a.
It's mainly the special service district.
Exactly, so the, they don't, they cannot use that model in La Salle.
Yeah.
Because they're independent wells, they're, they're not metered, they're not monitored. You may be running six thousand gallons a day and the neighbor is using three thousand gallons a month, so.
And you don't know though.
So you can't use that for your model.
Are they gonna start metering private wells?
No.
No, you can't.
Are you sure?
Yeah, there's not, there's not a mechanism to meter. Well, what I, what I really see coming down the line and this really probably. More pertains to Spanish Valley than anywhere else is you have a public water system that's right there, yet. Residents in that area still have well water within an area that has infrastructure. I can see more of a push to get them off of the well, but the water, yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna take our gold away.
It's a hard one. I mean, and we've gone as far as even on the special service district, you cannot be a board member. If you're on a well, you have to be, you have to be a user of the system, you know, to even. Have a say in what happens with the infrastructure and so I can, I could see the state trying to push for that and. One of our pushes is to, to have a higher priority for municipal systems or these public systems like that. So San Juan County shouldn't be third in priority. We should be a public drinking system. You know, that has protected water and safe drinking water. That should be a higher priority rather than. Some of these other.
Than the grandfather right.
Yeah, yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, and so you kind of see a push for that, but, but I think. Respectable of the fact, if you don't have water availability, but yet you're letting these twenty homes go in on a subdivision. Those two don't, they don't drive. There's, now are they gonna have to go into Colorado to get water? Now, you know, take their tanks into Colorado to fill up because Monticello is regulated and they're out.
Well, and this is important when it comes to the planning administrator being the, the approving. The minor subdivisions.
Hmm, major, minor, the major, yep.
Right, so like they need to make sure that they're.
You know, or a, a single building on the well. I mean, I, I, I feel like this is forcing some oversight on this board that I don't know that we're prepared for. Yeah, because of.
Comment on the water. Anytime you have a permit or building to build, you have to have one. You have to bring your own one. Right, so if someone wants to build a house here in Monticello. There's going to be a determination at some point that there's water to supply that house. Someone wants to build a house out in the county, there's a determination at some point, they drill the well, they've got water, or they have another means of getting water, so. It's not like twenty houses are gonna be approved without considering always there is water for this house. You know, and then they get built and say, no, we don't have water. That doesn't happen that way. You guys.
Yeah, but how about one?
You can't control.
Yeah.
Well, that, sometimes these developments come, come in phases.
Well, yeah, but even, every house has to have a permit and at that point, that determination has to be made about water. So usually when a developer comes in and say, hey, I have twenty thousand seven days here, we're gonna. Right up front, you know, the county or the city can say, well, show us how much water you got. If you're helping it, you know, in some, in some instances, farmland has water that's on the land and. You buy the land, you buy the water with it and the use college says, okay, we'll give you development credit for this irrigation water and turn that over to us and we'll use it in. I mean, at least it's some places that happen. But they may say, hey, you're gonna have to go buy some water for people like that that have a well, have extra enough for these five houses before you're gonna get anything. So, I mean, you can only know so much now.
Right, yeah. And they're, at this point, they're just using information from the existing service districts to model.
You had to give a will serve letter for this high level of energy.
Yes, mm-hmm, yep.
Fortunately, in the general plan, it, it requires us to create a separate section in here and so. Even though the focus is on land use, um, we do have to, you know, by that code I've provided you, have that. Indicated in our land use portion of the general plan, but it'll be a much bigger section within the overall general plan itself. That water element and for with us, with this process, we do have the state of Utah. Um, division of drinking water that is helping us on that piece. They've got examples that they've provided. They have a website that's dedicated going through this process and created a checklist of what we have to, to make sure that we have. Within the general pla- plan to, to pass that, that portion of Utah state Ludma. So.
Just for fun, who could we go look, what other county could we go look at?
They, I can send you the email that they provided. I think you have Garfield County on there. I know that Todd's going through his right now and. And Carbon County at the same time and so I can get you those examples. I'll send them to you. It's King County. I looked at King County last week. Um, they did similar. They had, everybody's required to update their general plan for this piece. Uh, they've gone through theirs and they listed out each special service district, the capacity, the anticipated growth. Kind of just the table, simple table and then just touched on a couple paragraphs with it to, to get everything. Other than that, take a look at this. This is, it's, it's been put on fire. It's like, hey, Mac, we need to get this general plan done. At the same time, you kind of heard from the ombudsman's office is that, you know, we're, we're not one of those states that. Your land use ordinance has to match your general plan, but when you look at it in the eyes, just. Viewing is, okay, we're missing this and we're missing this other component to it. We already, it already had. The agri- agricultural protection zones, but we don't have a process. Developed for somebody to even apply for that and so we do have to create separate policies. That actually enacted that and so I've added that language that today we need to enact and encourage. Cause we did, we've mentioned it back in twenty eighteen that it's allowed, but it's, there's not even an application or a process for it. So we do have to develop those components. That was another thing that, that the state can help us out on. And have provided different policies that other counties have to get that one going.
So what's the timeline on this? Or when it comes back to us?
Yes.
Would we be recommending it or not recommending?
It's a land use, yep.
So what do you think? When will we see this again?
Now, and that wasn't put on fire as much as getting the general plan and the land use ordinance is done.
Okay, so the other stuff will come later. The other stuff will come later.
Yes, yeah.
So then when will we see?
Timeline?
When will we see this? When will we decide on this?
This one here, we need to, we need to get really quick on this and the commissioners are. It's like, well, if this has to be done, the attorneys have kind of made a point that this needs to be done and so. So this is kind of, but, but I get kind of those conflicts in my head as I go through this is. Well, if, if we're not even going to have the recreation support as a zone. Then how, why would we list it in the general plan changes? If, you know, the, the water piece, if we're not, I think, I think I need to be further along in the water. Use element side of it before we can really dictate what our densities look like. You know, and, and where to have the higher densities within the county and so. There's things like that that I am in doubt in my head about quickly passing these changes and approving them. There's still a public process piece that has to come along with this is. You know, we've got to be able to, to make your changes, your recommended and suggested changes. In here you have. On the goals, I mean, I'm hoping that I can get more goals on here or. At least have you look at the goals. Are the goals? Still, do the goals still make sense? But it's you as a body that has to dictate and decide that. We push it out to the public, have that public hearing and get public feedback. Are we, are we seeing things right? And then finalize, finalize this. So hopefully within prior, well, this timeline. You know, I'm hoping that we can get this passed here and. We get your feedbacks in November of your changes that you guys want to incorporate. Um, have a lengthy discussion on that and then start working towards a public hearing and that public. Process in November, December, let's see, our next meeting's in November, so December, January. And so I think you would want to have this kind of as the guiding force with what you want to do with the land use. But yeah, we still need to work on both of them simultaneously. But yeah, we still need to work on both of them simultaneously.
The map was cut off?
On here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't, yeah, I'll get that to you so you can see that, and so I'll send that in a, a separate PDF to you, but. In there, it kind of goes over the densities, you know, kind of where we want to focus things. There's a roadmap in here. Um, things like that that need to be updated, but.
Well, the colors are wrong. I mean, it shows most of San Juan County is multiple use.
Are you looking in the, the land use portion?
I'm looking at the map that was included in our packet.
Well, cause at the time that they made that map.
It's in the general plan.
Right here.
There, yep.
So, so the legend show, I mean, it's con- the whole thing's confusing.
That's recommended.
Right, but multiple use is, it's showing all of that. Well, but a lot of that was public land, and there's no public land here. And the blue shows multiple use when it should show a different color, I mean.
Yeah, I see exactly what you're saying.
Maybe they included public lands as multiple use.
Wow, that's not how, I mean, given that the. Yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely work on fixing that.
That's gotta be fixed.
The consultant had proposed that back in twenty eighteen. So we can fix that definitely, so that it kind of has that more heat map focus. And get the colors right.
Get the colors right.
Okay, so be thinking of that general plan, um. Like I said, my changes in there are just suggested changes. Take it where you want to take it, um. Just help us out. So hopefully this next planning commission, we can have. More of that, okay, let's incorporate this and this and this and have that discussion of what should be in there, what shouldn't. And then push it out to the public after that meeting. And hopefully by that next month, we can have the public hearing in December and then. Work for final adoption through the commission.
Moving on to consideration approval of planned unit development for the homes. Now I can't read, sorry. Um, do we have a presenter for this, Mac?
He mentioned he was in a meeting prior to this and he was gonna try to jump on. It does not look like he's here.
So it's on you.
Let me go through the, the staff report on here, um. So you have the developers approached the county and applied for a planned unit development for the homes at Wilson Arch. To be located on parcel, parcel H and I, and I'll show you those. I'll be, I'll go through and show you those a little bit later. This is all within the Wilson Or- Arch Resort Community. Bay's One amended properties, property is located within the highway commercial district. Um, so we're lucky there. Parcel is, like I'd mentioned before, even with Spanish Valley, you have that one thousand foot area along one height. Highway one ninety-one that is that controlled district highway commercial. Uh, the permit, the proposed development allowing for short-term rentals. And the higher density on the parcels, the PUD process allows for exceptions to be approved. As long as it meets the overall intentions of the underlying zoning for the property. In order to satisfy these requirements for water service and fire suppression capabilities, the developer has received the will serve. Commitment that I've provided in the packet from the special service district. They are also online tonight. Um, to ask, answer any questions or comments regarding that, and so. In here, when, let me go to. So you have the will serve letter that the developer has approached, kind of like Jen's had mentioned, you know, as we. Are now making sure that the availability of water is there for distant, the density of the development or the development in general. So in here with the will serve, they've kind of, they've put it through their model. Um, they've given the will sell, the will serve letter for lot H. For nine ERCs and lot I for nine ERCs, which combined total of eighteen ERCs. For the development, and so in essence, the developer. With the special service district does have the available water for the development. And as a reminder, um, as overnight rentals, we typically find. That there's less water consumption on an overnight rental than there is just a regular long-term rental or. A residential use, just cause most of the time they're not there. They come at night. Um, for the showers and things like that. They're not washing vehicles, things like that, that typically you, you tend to see. In, um, the Wilson Arch subdivision that was. Approved years and years ago, well before all of our time, probably Lloyd was here maybe about back then. But you, you see on the parcel map, parcel I and parcel H, which the developer. Is intending to purchase and do this development on. In the parcel map itself, you can kind of see their original intent with the subdivision is. On parcel I, they've anticipated having commercial on parcel H. They're anticipating this multifamily housing on there, and then they kind of have this open space that. To the north and then adjacent to the parcel next to the highway. In here, you kind of see this, this circle area where they had originally anticipated having a well. Within the area to serve as both parcel H and parcel I. On this parcel, you'll also note that parcels E, F, G, H and I. The sewer systems were all supposed to be running within the road all the way down to parcel J. Which would act as their leach field for all of those parcels. This, this has taken such a long time, um. To come to fruition, to, to be moved, so originally he had commission approval back in two thousand and one. Twenty twenty-five now, things have obviously changed. Now there's a house that's located on parcel J. So that can no longer be the leach field for the, for the septic systems that are there, but in the proposal. The developer was cognizant of that. They do have to work, the special service district is looking at. A separate location for that well that was originally indicated on the parcel map here years and years ago, and so. As times have changed with that, so, so do the developments, but. In here, I've provided, um, kind of the overall concept plan, if I can get it to size right. I'll try to get it to her. So similar to the will serve letter of eighteen homes, you see the concept plan here for eighteen residential units. Um, with the swimming pool, kind of the fire pits, the cabana and the grills in the center. You see one of the lots on here for the leach field. Um, you see kind of the, the tree plantings that are proposed, um. Or at least anticipated in the future. You can't really hold them to the, the planting, plantings here, but. In there, as they've provided, you kind of some of the, the concepts of what the buildings would look like. Kind of see that, um, the concepts that they, he's provided, uh, throughout the development. Uh, he is asking for these to be overnight rentals, and so with that, it kind of. Creates some, some conflicts that we've got to work through tonight. Um, any questions so far about kind of what they're proposing, where and why? See, I'm, I can continue forward on here and let's get into the ordinance.
I just have one question.
Okay, yeah.
Um, I thought state law was if you subdivided within a subdivision, an established subdivision, there has to be a public hearing.
So he has to come back through the subdivision process.
Okay.
For this, but it detail, depends on what happens tonight.
Okay.
And so he is, if you look at this, um, parcel map. So parcel H and I are, so parcel I is four point two six acres. Parcel H is four point four. So on here, we're allowed in this zone. To go for one acre parcels. That's what's allowed right now in the highway commercial district. Um, and so he would be able to have four homes on one, four on the other, for a total of eight. Um, and that, and that's, that's important to remember is, so he will have to come back. Uh, and do an amendment to this one to get the smaller lot sizes. He is anticipating on here, his lot sizes, he's mentioned it on here, to going down to a third of an acre. Or a half of an acre on this size. To be able to give, have a density on, on here, cause if not, current zoning, you would have four and four. So eight total.
I mean, I, I think if the water's available, then I have no issues in dropping.
Okay, let me take you through the zoning on it. That's really why I provided you the zoning tonight. Uh, as we look through this, um, this is where. On your legislative hat, you guys are required to, to go through and interpret the zoning for yourselves, and so. When you go through and you look at highway commercial, let's turn to that first. So highway commercial is found on page forty-four. This should be familiar, we just recently had a discussion about this. So he's wanting to have the overnight rentals on here, and you look at those uses. On there, you've got, the closest that I can come to is the use, you're allowed for motels in highway commercial. Mobile home parks and in your highway commercial, typically your mobile home parks can become rentals as well. It doesn't necessarily call out overnight or short-term rentals within this zone, but it does. Add that paragraph on there. Other uses approved by the planning commission is being in harmony with the intent. At the neighborhood commercial zone and similar in nature to the above listed uses. So you do have to determine. Whether or not that show, those short-term rentals, um, are in harmony with the highway commercial zone.
Hotels or overnight accommodations.
Hotels or overnight accommodations.
They are the same definition.
Yes.
And yes, that is exactly what that says.
So you have to determine that as the first one.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then obviously it gets into the lot sizes and things like that, like I'd mentioned. Um, with lot sizes of being an acre is also problematic within the highway commercial zone. So if you go back to page twenty-nine, so I'm asking for the planned unit development. So in the planned unit development, it's a process, and, and the, the top, the purpose is really. It gives you a little bit more flexibility and it, it highlights that, that this. A planned unit development is to allow flexibility in the zone, as long as the use of the zone. Is allowed within the underlying zone, so you can't all of a sudden put something that doesn't fit. So if it wasn't in harmony, you wouldn't be able to fit it, and so, so we're still allowed with that. Um, to meet the harmony question, you know, for overnight rentals. But then when you get into, what do you have to do to get a permit, um, from planning commission? So on here, this is something that only the planning commission can approve in any zoning district. Um, no such planned unit development shall be permitted, shall be granted unless such development meets the use limitation of the zoning. Which I mentioned, um. In here, it mentions include planning unit developments in planning districts and meet the density. And other limitations of such districts, except as such requirements may be law, lawfully modified. As provided by this chapter. Uh, when I read that, I, I get, oh, well. Then it allows for you as a planning commission to, to have exceptions in this. Compliance with the regulations of the ordinance in no sense excuses the developer. From the applicable requirements of the subdivision ordinance, which you will have to do. Uh, except as modifications thereof are specifically authorized in the approval of the application. For the planned unit development. So on the required conditions, I'm gonna take you through each one of these. No planned unit development shall have an area less than approved by the planning commission as adequate for the proposed development. Planned unit development which contains uses not permitted in a zoning district in which. It is to be located will require a change of zoning, except that any residential use shall be. Considered as permitted use in a planned unit development, which allows residential units. And shall be governed by density design and other requirements of the planned unit development permit. So this is kind of where I went, two different directions, and I go, okay, explain to me, so in highway commercial. You don't have residential that's allowed, but you have this argument as overnight rentals are the residential, and so. So keep that in mind, but, you know, we're, are they in harmony with the commercial and a hotel? Yes. Um, and so I, I moved forward and on from that one. Um, the development shall be a single or corporate ownership, which it is. Next, on the planning commission shall require such arrangements and structures. And open space within the site development plan as necessary to assure that adjacent properties will not be adversely affected. Um, and it goes through A, B, and C. On there for density or land use intensity shall in no case be more than twenty-five percent higher. Than allowed in the zoning district, except not more than ten percent higher in residential districts. Item B, where feasible, least height and intensity of buildings. And uses shall be arranged around the boundaries of the development. Lot area width, yard height, density and coverage regulations shall be determined by approval of the site development plan. On item five, preservation, maintenance of ownership of required open space within the development, you see the open space. There's also the open space to the north of this. Dedication of land as public parks or parkway system or count, granting the county a permanent open space easement. It's the next one, or complying with provisions of condominium ownership act, um, kind of CCNRs. Things like that, that, that we don't have here. Other than there is an association to associate, you have the special service district for water. You also have the homeowners association that would have the CCNRs on there. Item six, landscaping, fencing and screening related to the several uses within the site. Obviously, you've driven by Wilson Arch, and there's not a lot of landscaping or fencing and screening. Um, in this area. The size, location, design and nature of signs, there's no signs that have been proposed on this development, this is right now. Um, so floodlighting, things like that, um, they weren't provided. A grading and drainage plan shall be submitted to the planning commission with the application. We don't have the, the grading plan. All we really have is the site plan out there, pretty flat for the most part. For these two properties, and so, um, we can get a topo and, and look at it to see if there's any concern. But once we go through subdivision, then we will have to have those documents in order to move forward. With the leach field, having a soil study. With the leach field, having a soil study, things like that. The developer has touched on. Um the soil on here, we would just have to get that data. To make sure that for our public health side of it, as they do the environmental review, that he's meeting all the requirements there. It also item number nine has the planting plan. He's like, okay, we showed planning on the plan, but don't hold us to it. But in the ordinance, it just mentions it's a proposed, um it doesn't have to be exact at this point in time. The proposed proposed use of a particular location shall be shown as necessary or just desirable. To provide a service or facility which will contribute to the general well-being of the neighborhood and the community. Um that's kind of where I see that the pool, cabana, fire pit. There's not a lot of neighbors here uh yet, there will be in the future. You know, will the other neighborhoods be able to use this one pool? Um I don't know yet. But it's one of those things that we can we can have in there. It item number eleven, it shall be shown. That under the circumstances of the particular case, the proposed use will not be detrimental to the health, safety and general welfare. Of persons residing in the vicinity of the planning at development. Part of the problem with this overall development, I've provided. Kind of the history in the staff report, and I'm hoping you've been it. You've taken the time to review review that staff report. There's always been concern with kind of our previous discussion of the lack of water availability within this development itself. The county has had approved years ago um the east side. To work as a special service district because they have the water availability for the east side. And then recently, as you as we moved throughout time. The county placed a restriction on the property. They had built out to a point where. Um allowing any more residential units to be permitted. Within this development would be detrimental, it'd be harmful for the health and safety, especially on fire protection. And so we only allowed so many homes to be developed and placed restrictions on the commercial property. That there's supposed to be a restriction on each of the commercial properties that. If you buy a commercial parcel I hear, you're supposed to develop your own water. But since that time that we placed the restrictions, the developer has has worked to receive grant funding or loan. To pay for additional water infrastructure and improve the water infrastructure. In this development to the point where they are today. The special service district has purchased those rights on the west side. Uh now and so now both sides, east and west are now combined. Under the special service district there in Wilson Arch. Um talking to to Wilson Arch, you know, obviously they've had the concerns of the past infrastructure. They've had to redo a lot of the the east, the west sides infrastructure to get it up to par. They've added additional water storage capacity in there, and that's where now you see this ability to will serve. And us to remove those restrictions on these parcels as long as. The special service district can meet the the demands that those units will have. And so they've been cognizant of this project and they've spoken with the developer, the investor. Um and then provided that will serve. But with this overall, they're gonna be watching closely to make sure. Uh that they can meet the demand as well as um you know, there's a a large concern of. Of what happens with the septic system and that future well. That was indicated originally on the plat map, you know, where that new location will be for that future well, because that. Kind of going back to that water availability. Um is something that they're going to be very interested in making sure. That they can meet the demand and then also on the septic side of it, that there's the appropriate leach and volume. Um that's allowed within that property that they're looking at leaching into. Uh to make sure that they keep their aquifers and everything clear from any contaminants and so. So that kind of overall is a purview of what's going on with. With the planned unit development. I think this is the first time you've seen a planned unit development. Come before you and kind of those steps and things that you need to to look at to make sure. Um that you're that you're reviewing and interpreting correctly. Any questions for me or Jen's? So and that's that's one of the things that I could touch on when when they approve the. Parcel map. So you see, that's what I highlighted on here. Their original intent was multifamily housing. And then commercial. And this was at the time of subdivision. So when you look at the subdivision process, subdivisions are an administrative approval for you. And not a legislative. Zoning, zoning uses and zoning allowances, those are legislative. And so when you approve the subdivision, they couldn't have proved the zoning. On here because it's all within the highway commercial zone.
Now the residential piece of that before is not in harmony. I I think that, you know, if we talked about this project, we had a. I don't know disagreement with that word, but I've interpreted a little differently than you have on the zoning. But I don't think it matters because that's just playing. So I don't, you guys, I just thought the group should know that, you know, essentially from the beginning, there was an intention.
Hey Mac.
Hey, yeah.
Before we move on, I think the Wilson Arch guy was online or somebody from the special services.
Probably Craig.
Did we see if they have anything they want to add or say regarding this?
Let's see. Craig, can you hear us? We can't hear you. It looked like you were trying to talk. Still can't hear you. Todd, can you hear us? Todd can hear us. Say something, Todd. Let me see if I can hear you. Maybe it's on our end. Okay, hold on, I can't hear you either. Let me find out why I can't hear anybody. Okay, Craig's there. Okay, now say something.
Can you hear me now, Mac? This is Craig.
Awesome. Go ahead.
All right, because there was a, there's a couple of things that I want, I I'd like to interject about Wilson Arch. First and foremost. Um the SSD out here took over about three years ago. Um as far as the water and the sewer are concerned, um the developer. The previous developer has had nothing to do with it. As as Mac uh has stated, we have put about one, one and a half million dollars into the water system out here. To improve the uh distribution system as well as um. Uh making sure that we had enough fire hydrants in the community to um take care of any problems that we have. We have a, we have a hundred and ten thousand gallons of storage out here. We have three wells. Um there's, there is a plan to put an an additional two wells out here, one in phase one. And one in phase two. Phase two is uh the. The northwest portion of Wilson Arch that's undeveloped. Uh we have a um will serve letter for any developer who decides they want to purchase those. Lots and develop that and then that will will serve letter basically states that. They have to put the water and sewer infrastructure in. It has to meet all uh county state requirements. Before they can connect to the the main system, which is phase one. In phase one, there are fifty-seven lots. Twelve of those lots are commercial lots. The the majority of the people out here want to see. Uh complete buildout of phase one. We have hired Sunrise Engineering to do a master plan and they determine. What our ERC should be per lot, including the commercial lots. Um I I think what's important here is that uh our concern is making sure that we have enough water. For a complete buildout, which means um in phase one, fifty-seven. Lots build out and fifty-seven um families. Uh renters, whatever, here twenty-four seven. That's our concern. The other concern is the sewer and making sure, making sure that our septic systems and our sewer systems. Can sustain that kind of bill out, build out. So that is our concern and we want to make sure that um you know, what whatever's build out here. Whoever decides they want to come out here and and um and build out, they they have. We we can provide the water and the septic systems to accommodate those personnel. So we're gonna need uh the county support. We're gonna need um, you know, there's gonna be, I'm I'm the only guy here right now. I live here twenty-four seven. Who's trying to make sure that everything goes the way it's supposed to go. Uh we we took over, like I said, three years ago and and uh we're we're just, our concerns are just making sure that. We have the water and the um the capacity for sewage to take care of the entire community.
Well, so all of this is going to be for short-term renters as opposed to fifty-seven houses for people who live in San Juan County.
Well, I I I don't, I I I can't give you, I can't tell you that for sure because what was. What was presented to the HOA here was that these two lots. Were going to be subdivided and sold as individual residential lots.
Is there any covenants in there about nightly rentals?
Yes, there there is. Yeah, we have. So the. The cottages on the east side of highway one ninety-one can be rented out. For more than thirty days, I believe that's what San Juan County says. Whatever San Juan County says, they can be rented out for. There's no, the the only lots there that are uh allowable for short-term rental are the commercial lots. And there's twelve of those.
But the, but these two are commercial lots?
Yes, th- these two are commercial lots.
Okay, so they don't, they don't fall within the CCNRs of no nightly rentals?
They, no, they fall under the commercial covenants.
Yeah.
But what's what's being, this is, this is the problem, and I think it's probably a lack of uh communication. I don't know. But what is being told to the HOA is that those lots are going to be subdivided and sold as individual residential lots. Which means there's going to be permanent residents there. So 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 my concern is I have to think about fifty-seven lots. Fifty-seven houses and providing water to fifty-seven houses twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. That's my concern.
But your feasibility study says it's av- available, correct?
Yes, it, yes, it does. But again, again, we're looking at, what we're looking at is, I have. Five people, five families that live out here permanently right now. And if everybody showed up, I don't know what the system can do. I can only, I only know what the system can do based off of uh. A a engineer study.
Right. And that's what all of them are based off of is the the flow and.
Right. And I would, like I said, we have a hundred and ten thousand gallons of storage. We have. Two high-flow pumps on the west side. We have uh three wells and each one of those has a pump on it and then we have. Um four booster pumps for pressure.
Mac, uh why does parcel H say multifamily housing instead of commercial?
That was back in twenty twenty-one. Those is their original intents behind this.
Was that amended to a commercial?
Yeah, this one submitted in twenty twenty-five, I believe. In my staff report, I touched on that. Kind of that history. Let me jump up to. So originally approved in nineteen ninety-seven and then we had. Yeah, then I get into that discussion, but I've got in, when you look at our website. I've got and it that twenty twenty-one and then I've got a twenty twenty-five. And then a more recent, and they've taken similar to Lloyd, what you mentioned is. They've got to amend certain sections of the subdivision, so they've done that, just kind of piecemeal instead of the overall. Subdivision, but this is the most recent version that I could find for the for these parcels here.
And so just uh the other thing that's nice gentleman said, a million dollars was put in to. Develop this infrastructure. And again, we're going to do a million dollars for short-term rentals. Okay.
The intention behind behind the development and from the developer is kind of like Craig had mentioned is. The intent is to build a couple of units out and then sell the those units. And a lot of that, I would imagine, none of this is me speaking, is then you have. You know, the money from those cells that you develop the others and you keep on going through that. When you look at the PUD process, um in here, there's targets that he has to comply with. He has to be under construction within a year and completed within four. And so it kind of gives the anticipation that they're gonna begin fairly soon. And then within that four years, they would have complete buildout. Now, obviously, that could be extended or waived, but yet the overall intentions of the ordinance. Have it as a four-year, four-year to build out.
And can we approve this but without a short-term rental?
No, because then it's a, it would be back to the residential question that's not permitted in the highway commercial.
So but but it but it is. So my understanding of the law is if. If I came in and did a subdivision in a commercial zone. And planning, zoning and the commission approve it, they have now approved a zoning change. If it is not a permissible use in that zone and they approve it, they have now approved a zoning change. So where does that put us with this zoning?
I'm lost.
So 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 say I, say I come into a highway commercial.
Yes.
And I'm put in a residential neighborhood. It is not in the land use as residential.
So it's not in our ordinance.
Yes, it is not. So but if I come in here, planning zoning um approves it and recommends it to the commission, the commission looks at it. Approves it, it is now a zone change because that you cannot make a non-conforming use. In existing zone. You are actually allowing that person to do a zone change.
I don't know how you could allow for that or why it be allowed in law because you you've skipped the public hearing process.
But allowing in law to create a non-conforming use in an existing zone isn't allowed either.
Jen's.
You're essentially doing that, right? You're just not calling it a zone change.
Yeah.
Well, I I don't get the zone change part of it.
Keep in mind here that this area we're talking about. You know, it. With the development itself, the anticipation is it's commercial or overnight accommodations, right? That's that's what the. That's what the CCNRs say, that's what. Bone said. Um and so, you know, those two uses are consistent. Um, and so, you know, those two uses are consistent as we discussed already with the zone before the subdivision was even approved, right? And so I think the concern with the gentleman on the phone was, I mean, he said, yes, it's for overnight accommodation, but what he was told is that they were just gonna be residential houses. And so maybe his concern is, you know, I, I would like this. I think, if I interpreted what he said correctly, I think he was saying he was hoping that would be clarified at some point.
Yep. I, so, uh, there, it is true that the, the commercial covenants were just amended. So it was allowed for commercial lots previously to be subdivided. The, and the amendment was, uh, was made that those subdivisions had to have um, easements and rights of way for each sub, subdivided parcel of those two lots. Uh, which, you know, which for, for the SSD means that we have to put a meter on each one of those subdivided lots and there has to be access to those meters through those easements and rights of way, which would make those two lots, you know, the, those subdivided parcels of those two lots uh, separate residences, which to me means a, a community inside a community? Well, I mean, you know, you know, I understand the, the, the overnight stuff, but my, my concern is what if all these people show up and decide to live here permanent? And I've got, I've only had, I only have so much water to, to, you know, provide, you know, for all these people. You know, you're talk, you're talking like three thousand, three thousand gallons of water a month per residence? That's average.
So the will serve applies only to an overnight accommodation situation?
No, it's just the ERCs.
Yeah, well, I understand. I, I, trust me, I, I understand all that and I've been, I've been trying to figure this out, uh, you know, for a while, but you know, I, my, my concern is providing water and making sure that our water is safe and that we have the appropriate septic systems for the community to keep everybody that comes out here and lives out here safe and happy. And that's my concern. Um, you know, if, 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 if the, if the, the, the commission feels that this is appropriate, then I, I'm all for it. I just want to make sure that the county is on board with making sure that all, all, you know, code requirements and everything, they're gonna check everything and make sure everything is gonna work out, but I can only provide so much water. Got a hundred and ten thousand gallons and three wells and that's what we have to provide, you know, all these people water out here and.
Take a definition check real quick. ERC? What does that stand for?
Residential connection. What's E?
Yep.
What's E?
I was looking for emergency.
No. It's each home. Yeah, yeah. Residential connection. I can't think of the E right now.
Is it equivalent residential connection?
Thank you. There you go. Um, but okay, so back to.
There is, there, there is a difference. There is a difference between a residential connection and a commercial connection. So, you know, I mean, you have to, you know, if you have a hotel, there's a difference. If you have a overnight rental, there's a difference.
Your own, you look at your own pay schedule, it's one point two ERUs for overnight accommodations uh, of a greater value, of a greater size. And that's, that's coming from yours. So yes, you're correct. So you're looking at one point two ERUs per connection on what, what's proposed? How many? Eighteen of them?
Eighteen units.
Yeah. Yeah, if you look at.
So an overnight accom- I mean, Mac, I thought I heard you say uh, a short-term rental used less water, but this shows that it uses more water, if I'm reading.
No, that, that is not the way these read. This is what we charge. So if, uh, you as a resident, I'm gonna charge you one. As a commercial-ish business, you're gonna get charged one point two. So if I'm charging you a dollar eighteen per thousand gallons, I'm charging the other person dollar eighteen plus another, um, twenty-two cents on top of that or whatever. So it, it's kind of a increase in price. It isn't the actual use.
That's important.
Yeah, but, but it, you know, the money's not gonna make up for water in the ground or water in the tanks. So if I don't have the water to support it, then I don't have the water to support it. And that's what I've, that's what I've told this, the, the developer. I can only support so much.
But it's based off of your, off of Sunrise Engineering's, um?
Yes, it is. It is based off, yes.
If they can prove that the water's there and available for it, you cannot deny the water.
No, I, I understand that. I understand that completely. But again, I, I can't, I can't tell you what this system provides to a, a community that has, um, a hundred percent of fifty-seven lots here on the ground. I, I, we have five, there's five families that live here permanently. If everybody shows up, uh, you know, and to, to, to be out here at the same time, I don't know and Sunrise can't know. They can only know what those pumps provide and, and what's in the tanks. That's it. We don't know what's in the ground. That's my point.
Well, then it shouldn't be a service district if you can't supply water to what you are giving will serve letters out for.
Well, we're, we're providing service to what we have here based off of what the engineers say we can do.
So then why did you supply a will serve letter for this?
For what?
For this project?
Provided a will serve letter for phase two.
Which includes H and I?
No, no. Phase two is a separate location. There was a will serve letter provided for phase two. Not for the commercial lots in phase one.
Serve letter for this, Mac?
This is the will serve letter for lots H and I.
I don't know anything about a will serve letter for lots H and I.
This one was signed by Eric.
Hey guys, this is Curtis Wells. I'm on the call, just to let you know.
Hey Curtis, say thanks for being here.
You bet.
So yeah, we got the will serve letter specifically for lots H and I.
So then I guess we're past that argument.
From the chair.
If, if we have a will serve letter, then the argument's over on the wall.
Is there a concern I can address?
So we were just talking about, um, two things. So the, the water availability overall and then also the overnight rentals. Part of it is the discussion had stemmed back to where you had presented to the special service district that you were gonna sell off the residential lots. As you build, you'll sell and then continue to build. And so I touched on kind of that four-year requirement within the planned unit development, but with the, you know, just the hesitancy and we may have to extend it in the future, just depending on cells, but um, other than that is overnight rental discussion and anything else that the planning commission can think of that was.
Just in the agenda, item title, it doesn't say anything about short-term rental. He wants a, it's just a, a plan, approval for a planned unit development.
Correct.
So sure, sure, these commercial lots in the Wilson Arch Resort Community, they are, they were approved, um, for lodging. The, um, the subdivision CCNRs allow for lodging and that approval dates back to two thousand and seven. The issue was, um, allowing subdivision of the commercial lots. The HOA, um, has signed amendments to the CCNRs that allow subdividing. And so this is just, you know, uh, making sure that that aligns with the, you know, with the county. But the issue of lodging on these commercial lots, this community was designed and approved for lodging on these commercial lots. It's not new.
So the two things I see, we have a will serve letter for water for this. And it is a permissible use for hotels.
It's not a motel though. It's, I mean, it, I mean, even in.
Would you rather see just one big building with a hundred rooms or a nice development?
It's in harmony with the other existing uses. How many of those are, I mean, short-term rentals? We decided our residential uses, right?
Yeah, but the HOA still approved those lots for.
Yeah, this was, this was designed, this was designed for the commercial lots to be lodging. And the HOA likes this proposal because they do not want hotels or like three-story condo buildings. The reason why, you know, they've amended their CCNRs to allow subdivision is they like this proposal because they think this is a more of a compatible use of lodging than hotels. And honestly, the, the water district, like the fact that the CCNRs allow for hotels and condos, which is like ten to twenty units an acre, the water district um, will only issue the density like as stated in the, in the will serve. And so this is the only type of lodging use that's frankly developable, given the amount of water they're willing to, you know, to, to allow. So that's really how we wound up to this place was that this is, this is just what everyone can agree on makes sense, given the amount of water and what the HOA prefers. So we're in harmony with the community.
I, I agree with that too. I'd just say it's not a hotel or a motel.
Like, like, uh, folks, this is, that, that's, that's my point. I just want to make sure that we can provide the water and the sewer to this, this development with, without any problems to the rest of the community. That's the, my only concern. Nothing else.
So I, I had, I guess I had walked out when the Wilson Arch Special Service District started talking. Is that not the same entity that provided the will serve?
Yes, one hundred percent.
Yeah, you have the letter from the chair.
Oh, and it's not the chair on the phone?
No, I, I'm, I'm the, I'm, I'm the on- only guy available for the Wilson Arch Special Services District. Uh, the HOA is not available. I, I, you know, I've talked to them. Um, that my, the only, the only concern that the SSD has is providing water to, uh, you know, water and sewer to, to this development, making sure that it's, it remains safe for the community. We, everybody here understands that there's commercial, I have a commercial lot myself out here. We all understand there's commercial lots out here. We understand what the rules are. We just want to make sure that we've, we can provide water for everybody. And I've talked, I've talked to Curtis on the ground about that and, and Ricardo on the ground about that. Making sure that we can provide water to the community and that the, their septic systems are in compliance with state and county and, you know, codes. That's it.
Yeah, and our, uh, I appreciate that. And our, our, uh, concept plan that, that we've, um, you know, basically been given the thumbs up from the HOA and the water district, that is the density that's the, that conforms with the density in the will serve. So we're in harmony with the water district.
And, and, again, I apologize. The only will serve that I was tracking was phase two. Eric must have done something without letting me know that, you know, something else was done. I, I'm tracking, uh, the movement of well four. I'm tracking of the, the will serve letter on phase two. Um, you know, but this, these are the challenges that we have to meet when you have, uh, the majority of your, your board members live out of state. And they would, you know, and people are traveling and doing their own things. We're, we're just trying to accommodate and make sure we're doing the right thing. That's it.
Well, the only other, um, one is we always have to consider the traffic. Are there any concerns around the UDOT access?
I call that on UDOT. I'm sure there're that many units, they've gotta be requesting some lanes in there. I think, I think when the original subdivision was put in, they did.
That's, that's another story.
Okay, let, let us talk. So that we could make that just part of our, uh?
So you. Well, it's not a condition.
No, but, but I mean, this is, if we're approving this, we can say, we need to make sure.
On here that you, you can, wouldn't necessarily call it conditions, but you can add other items to this as deemed appropriate. So if you look at seven dash seven in order to, that it may approve a planned unit development, planning commission shall have authority to require that the following conditions be met by the applicant, but it, as it mentions in there in the paragraph, paragraphals there, it's among others, it deems appropriate.
Which we've done that forever. You know, anytime that we, um, you go through this, even if it's not a conditional use, it's like, hey, we want to make sure that you're meeting the qua- requirements of this, uh, DOPL and the health department and everything else that goes along with that fire, you know, are we, are we?
During subdivision, yeah, during the subdivision process, all of those have a checkoff on the subdivision plan that will have to be amended.
It does already note some of those things after. Did you write this or was this from Curtis?
The developer.
Okay. Yeah, and he mentions in there that it can be road and access may be modified. The current one is showing that the returns are a hundred and twenty feet diameter, sixty-four foot wide roads. But they may be modified to fit whatever UDOT says or whoever else.
So have they met all of our requirements for planning unit development under two thousand and eleven?
You think the only one is that, so you've got the in harmony and it, and it has that language in here. You know, that's one of the things that you're determining is, is it still in harmony with the underlying zoning. So you see that, an answer to your question, Anne, in my recommended, um, motion to approve this is you've got to to mention that it, you do find that the overnight rentals are in harmony with that.
It's just a bit nice if that, if that was in the item, like it should say consideration approval of planned unit development for sounds at Wilson Arch for the purpose of, you know.
I didn't, yeah, and I.
You can make that in your motion. If you make the motion.
Because it mentions that same language in the process for the planned unit development. So you've got to make sure that it's in harmony. So I listed in there, you also have to make sure you have those findings of fact in your approval. This is why and we're approving or denying, you know, findings of fact for.
Is there somewhere in your application, Curtis, that says that you want these to be short-term rentals?
Well, um, the application for the PUD, you know, doesn't get into permitted use, but the, um, again, the subdivision was approved in two thousand and seven with overnight accommodations listed as a permitted use in the CCNRs.
So it's already implicit with the, with the zone underlying.
Yeah, we're, we're, yeah, yeah.
Or already allowed.
What version of the ordinance were we using in two thousand and seven?
Nineteen seventy-eight. Nineteen seventy-eight.
Nineteen seventy-eight to two thousand and eleven.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, see, and this was before.
That's when the zoning. That's when the zoning maps were created, is in nineteen seventy-eight and the first ordinance. It was like four paragraphs.
I, I'm gonna make a statement. You know, I, I personally am very concerned that every. Um, project that has come to us so far, um, is not affordable housing. We have not heard an affordable housing project since I joined this commission. And the fact that we're talking about limited water supply and then all of these homes going in. And we're looking at the general plan that says that in San Juan County, housing concerns include not only affordability. But also availability. And then only forty percent of households can afford to buy an average-priced home in the county. And in specific areas, this percentage is even lower. I mean, I think I'm gonna vote for this because I think I have to. But, but I really disagree with this ongoing influx of, of proposals. To build short-term rentals and houses for rich people.
May I comment on that, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
I understand that concern. I think, you know, as a land use authority, you have to look at. Your plan and, and where you're developing, you know, for, for what purpose? This is highway commercial in a, in a resort community that was, um. Zoned and intended for exactly what's in front of you. So this is an opportunity here to generate revenue. Um, and was designed for this purpose. Uh, and so in this specific case, this is. This is what was, what this was approved for in two thousand seven. And I think this is an opportunity to work with. You know, a local developer that, you know, that's gonna do a good job and generate valuable revenue for the county.
I'll also make a statement.
Subway's closing, you know that, right?
In my time here, nothing that comes before us is straightforward, right? There's always your bobbing and weaving between ordinances and trying to make stuff happen. For folks that I think are truly trying to do the right thing, right? So in my mind, this speaks to the brokenness of what we're trying to deal with, with our two thousand eleven ordinance. With the Spanish Valley ordinance, with all of the hodgepodge that we have going on right now that. Boy, we need to, we need to get our processes lined out, or this is gonna be a reality forever.
Yep.
Right? Trying to live in this gray area that I can't stand.
But this is an HOA situation, right?
Well.
I mean, no, in the sense that they are the investors, the existing residents. That are using the special service district and they need to be responsible for having language that protects them from encroachment. On what is available.
Well, they, they can. They can put landscaping restrictions and things like that on their properties in the HOA.
So ultimately, if their system can't handle what Curtis is applying for, then it's not gonna happen, right?
Yep, and, and they can't give a letter out that they can serve that water if it's available.
Yeah, we, well, we were pretty grumpy. Sorry, Mr. Chair, I was on the water, like, I was pretty grumpy when they first. Um, sent us like the estimate of what they would allow because their, their CCNRs say hotel and condo. But their water availability says single family. And so thi- this is really, I mean, what you're seeing is, is kind of us. Just accepting what they're willing to give us. And, and what they've issued us here is, is, is. Their calculation on being conservative because the, the amount of density they're allowing us here. Is based on a very conservative estimate so that they can service the rest of their development.
Right, yeah, I'm looking at calculations on that.
Yeah, so, so that, what you're seeing here is the result of, of, of a conservative water model.
That, and, and that's exactly true. You know, we, I, we, none of us know what our system can provide. To a full build-out community. We don't know. And, and, uh, you know, we're, we, we understand the revenue part of it as well. We'd like to see revenues coming back into the community. We'd like to see road improvements. I mean, we, we put all the road signs in just so EMS could find houses out here. And, and a lot of it is volunteer work from the community, you know, people that live out here that volunteer their time when they come out here. That's, that's what's important. It's, it's community. It's not about making money. It's community. We're trying to, to provide, uh, you know, a, 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 a good space, a quiet space for people. This isn't a resort community. It's a retirement community. The majority of the people that live out here or have places out here are retired. I'm a retired army vet, thirty-two years. I moved out here just to, to be left alone and be quiet and enjoy life. And I'm volunteering to help out with the HOA and, and the SSD to provide, you know, a, a better environment for people. And that's all we want. We just want to make sure that everybody's happy and that we're, we're following the rules and we're doing the right thing. That's it. It's not about money. It's about, you know, family, community, team. That's what it's about.
I would say this, this Wilson Arch community was never intended to be affordable housing. And from the beginning, you know, that's just not the application for this land use. But going forward in our plan, we will have, we'll, we'll be addressing that. Right? By the state requirements. So I feel, I feel like it's a separate issue.
So, real quick, does, does anybody have any more questions for the Wilson, um, service district?
No.
Anybody have any questions for Curtis?
I, I do love that this is like a small version of our general plan discussion. Putting in the water.
It's true. That's true, Shay.
Right? I'd like to make a motion. Mr. Chair, if you'll entertain it. I make a motion to approve the planned unit development at Wilson Arch. Um, for the fact that it is more in harmony, um, than other uses discussed. As well as we've received the will serve letters, um, and per what Curtis has said. Or the developers said, um, that working with the community, um, it is just in harmony with what their plans are out there. So. Yeah, and the what? Oh, yeah, and, uh, and I think that's through, working through the planned unit development process that'll, that'll hit.
The density exception?
No, like road improvements.
Fire.
We will, it's a subdivision process that will all be.
So I'm just gonna leave my motion at that.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Close?
Thank, thank you so much, Mr. Chair and, and to the board, um, and to the water district. And, um, I really appreciate everything that you're doing. I really hope for everyone's sake that you can get your new ordinances.
All right.
Yeah, thank you so much. Have a good night.
Okay, next is permit.
October building permit review.
Hey, um, Cory, can you present these?
What are the eating shelters? Six eating shelters?
The eating shelters are down at the church camp down here at Full Hollow. And they're like sixteen by sixteen pavilions. Just to prevent you from terrain, basically. Little bit of shade, little bit of rain, there all they are.
That's cool.
Okay.
And they did add. I can't remember, was eight on the Montpello side and eight on the Blinding Side or four and four? And sixteen total, right?
Six.
Six.
Six, yeah.
Cabanas.
Or cabanas.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move with adjourned.
In a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye. Close carries.
Hey, don't forget to turn in your paper work.
Two minutes after.
Subway closes tonight.
Yeah, two minutes ago.
Oh, my gosh, I'm starving.
Just kidding.
He's wanting to pay me. He's like, hey, I want some. Hey, thank you guys. Sure appreciate it. Hopefully Subway's still open.